Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this January 28th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. This meeting is hereby called to order. For those of you all who are willing and wish to participate, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we give thanks today for the privilege of service in a city we cherish. Tonight, we invoke your inspiration, such that our efforts in this meeting bring forth lasting contributions to our community. Give us wisdom and insight, and guide our work in every aspect of our operations. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we've got a full house. Okay. Madam Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. There are several. We have one addition. It is item 13.06, and it is grant funding for high-efficiency upgrades to the HVAC and lighting systems, added by EPER. We also have a target issue update on long-range planning that was added by Commissioner Miller because we will not have a meeting on February 11th, and she wanted to get some issues on the table. Also pulled for discussion today, items 9.04, approval of the subdivision plat, Southwood Unit 32; 9.06, approval of recommended ranking and award of commercial property brokerage services; and 9.07, approval of recommended ranking and award of record keeper services, RFP. And those are the only mods that I have.
Okay. Perfect. There are no presentations this evening or announcements. The City Commission will be in recess for the moment to reconvene in a few minutes when we're joined by members of the sinking fund as the sinking fund board.
I'm going to grab one more chair, Mayor.
Okay. Please. All right. Perfect. Want to welcome the members of the Tallahassee City Sinking Fund Board. Welcome. And we, our first item of business is item 7.01, approvals of revisions to the pension investment policy. Mr. Jim Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Investment Advisory Committee, who along with you as commissioners and mayor make up our sinking fund commission. Before I get to the item, I do want to be sure to introduce these members and thank them for their participation, starting to my right and the audience's left, Kim Davis, Carl Munson, and William McLeod. All three meet with us on a quarterly or more frequent basis as needed, and then occasionally for evenings like this on our policy items.
Welcome.
And Mr. Treasurer Clerk, if I could add unpaid. So thank you very much for giving generously of your time.
That's right. There is no conflict of interest. They don't make a penny off of this hard work. Tonight's item before you is a fairly straightforward one. For our pension investments, the city has a policy that guides the category, types, targets, targeted percentages, and that sort of thing for how we invest the city's pension funds. For this meeting, we are bringing back a recommendation to you that has come through Siegel, Rogers, Casey. We've worked with our investment consultant in bringing this forward. We've met with the Investment Advisory Committee, these three gentlemen, and approved it and are now bringing it forward to the full sinking fund commission. What we are proposing is the addition of bank loans to our approved investment categories. Currently, our fixed income category is allocated 20%. What we want to do is simply add a different category within that fixed income so that we would have 15% to our existing fixed income allocation and 5% to a bank loan allocation. That will allow us to diversify our bond holdings somewhat. One of the significant differences, bank loans are typically a variable rate investment, which means in an interest rate environment that may change, the 15% fixed might act a little bit differently than this bank loan. And so what we would then would have is essentially some diversification and some broadening of our investment options. So we're bringing that forward to you. You have the agenda item.
Are there any questions, Commissioners? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Moved and seconded that we move approval of item 7.01. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Again, I'd like to thank our --
Thank you all very much for taking time.
-- members for their service and participation.
Hope y'all didn't get all dressed up for us. Although it does look like William put on a vest just for the City Commission meeting. I want to point that out.
Is that a protective vest?
No.
I was going to say, thank you for getting all dressed up for us.
Yeah, right. All right, Commissioners, we are now at the point in the agenda for citizen input. And just for those of you who have not been to City Commission meeting before, need to be reminded, we do have forms, I believe, in the back of the room, on the back table. For anyone wishing to speak, all speakers must complete one of those forms and just slide it up here on the dais. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of speakers, and I am trying to sort them by agenda item. But I believe we can start with item 9.04, which was, I believe, just mentioned as an item pulled from consent for discussion. And for all of the items that are on our consent and policy formation portions, this will be the opportunity for citizens to speak to those. I'll call first David Ramba, and I'll ask speakers to go to the microphone, again, to my right and your left. Each speaker will have three minutes for his or her comments. There is a light to your left that will be green and then turn yellow and red, but I will also let you know when your three minutes have expired. And if you will give your name and address for the record, we will begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chairman. My name is David Ramba. I'm at 4670 Grove Park Drive. I'm elected in my second term now as supervisor of the Capital Region Community Development District, also known as Southwood. The item that was pulled, 9.04, really is an item that's in a stage of items where we've been working on the Phase 3 of a portion of the Southwood development that we believe as a community does not meet the city-approved planned unit development agreement, that the city agreed to with the developer on how Southwood was going to be developed. For those of you familiar with the area, Commissioner Zipper, one of my former neighbors was out there. It is a very walkable community. You don't walk up to the front door and you have to dodge cars as you're going down the sidewalk. It's made for front-facing houses with front porches that are close to the road, where if you sit on your front porch, your neighbors walk by, you can say hi, you make eye contact. We know our neighbors, we know the community. And what has occurred during the downturn really is a lack of enforcement by the city of the units of the PUD that are required with things such as on-street parking, alley-fed types of products, where your car's around back and your front porch is at the front. And when you look at the house, you're not just seeing a two-car garage with a small little door and a porch off to the side. You're really seeing the front of the house and the livable portion of the community. Phase 2, that's before you, frankly, in my opinion, does not meet the PUD, doesn't meet it in any way, shape, or form. But you do have Phase 3 coming down the pipe. And what we have done as members of the CDD Board and just as members of our community, since we don't have that authority, we reach out to the developer and try to come up with a solution for them. And they have worked with us to try to come up with the Phase 3 portion of it, actually meeting the intent of the PUD, going to provide some on-street parking on Orange Avenue. There's a lot of open spaces we have out there, and when people don't have parking, they just tend to park, I don't know, I've had people towed from my front yard because they just decided it was an open grass space, and that would be a good place to park. Fortunately, it ended up being my buddy's mother, but it still, we've made up and everything's fine. But what we're asking the city is really clear. We're asking the city to come up with some direction to your staff, that you are the first line of enforcement. Us as a community development district, you know, we can probably harass the developer on occasion or the builder by not letting them hook into our water line, but essentially that's a ministerial activity that we do as a community development district, and that's not the proper way to plan. What we'd like to do is have some sort of direction from city staff to say, meet the requirements of the PUD, these are the standards. What's being built in Southwood, we're not asking you to do anything different. We're asking you to do what's been approved in the original plan with the alley-fed, street parking-type development that we've created out there, and be able to maintain that so it just doesn't turn into another row of production homes that doesn't have the feel and continuity of what we've built out there. And that's the essence of our comment, that's the essence of us requesting that item 9.04 be pulled, that even though this doesn't meet the requirements of the PUD, because the way it was approved in Phase 1, Phase 2's kind of stuck there. But we've moved on to Phase 3 with the builder, and we're accepting --
Excuse me, your time's expired.
Oh, it went away. Sorry. It needs to be up here so we can see it better.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Carolyn Bibbler. She will be followed by John Ray. Good afternoon.
Madam Manager, I'm Carolyn Bibbler, 3673 Mossy Creek Lane in Southwood. Reading from the Tallahassee Land Development Code under Planned Unit Development, "Purpose and Intent of District," the planned unit development zoning district is intended to provide a method by which proposals for a unique zoning district, which are not provided for or allowed in the zoning districts otherwise established by this chapter, may be evaluated. It goes on, but it ends, "The standards and procedures of this district are intended to promote flexibility of design and permit planned diversification and integration of uses and structures while at the same time retaining in the City Commission the absolute authority to establish such limitations and regulations as it deems necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare." The final plat for Unit 32, Phase 2, which is before you today for approval, does not meet the intent, nor do we fill the letter of the Southwood PUD. I believe all of you have been contacted in some fashion regarding this by a member of our group of homeowners. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review our handout, where we outlined some of the development practices that have, in the past, created, contributed to, and enhanced our sense of place. Consequently, Southwood homeowners and renters experience a very unique feeling of community that crosses socioeconomic boundaries. In Southwood, welcoming streetscapes extend the living quarters of all residents out into the public space. This is just as the PUD intended, to quote PUD Table 3.2, which specifies the implementing elements of the plan. The development of community was the primary focus of the planning effort for Southwood. Traditional neighborhoods emphasizing comfortable, defined outdoor spaces, pedestrian-scaled streets, required street landscaping, and a de-emphasis of vehicular traffic will combine to improve the livability of neighborhoods within Southwood. St. Joe's Development of Southwood, prior to the economic downturn, adhered to the goals of the PUD. As you know, it works. It really does. It really does work. So now that St. Joe is selling off large parcels to be developed by others, the lofty but attainable goals of the PUD have somehow not been translated into the development standards. Although city regulatory staff has on many occasions agreed that newer developments in Southwood, including Units 26, 31, and 32, clearly don't meet the intent of the PUD, they feel powerless to stop them or to force them to conform. Believe me when I say that we, as a neighborhood, do not want to stop development in Southwood from happening. We're glad for new residents. We welcome their contribution to our taxing district, the taxing district that was set up to offset the increased costs involved in making and keeping Southwood the special type of a development that it is. We are not asking you to deny the Unit 32, Phase 2 plat. We do not wish to inflict damage on the developer, who has already paid to engineer the Phase 2 plat and who has come to the table with a revised Phase 3 that comes closer to conformance with the PUD. We are just asking that we, as residents paying our fair share for what we were promised, are not the ones who have to negotiate deals with future developers in order that the PUD be followed.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Mr. Mayor, I want to go ahead and mention at this point that I've probably got about, I'll say, 15 to 20 speaker forums for items on our agenda. We allot 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for those remarks. If you want, we'll just proceed with them, and I thought it might be a good time for the admonition that if you, if somebody on a given item wants to say the same thing as the previous person, I think our commission will hear you well if you say, "I agree with that person," or "I support that item," and that will allow us to move more quickly and hear more of our speakers within the 30-minute window.
Thank you.
Next speaker on 9.04 is John Ray. He'll be followed by Tom Asbury, the last speaker on that particular item.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. My name's John Ray, 3639 Mossy Creek Lane, resident of Southwood, also elected supervisor to the Capital Region Community Development District. I'm here to talk about the same issue, most directly, Unit 32, Phase 2, which you will be considering later this evening, as well as Phase 3 that will be coming down the pike. In totality, this phase, while we don't believe meets the intent and letter of our PUD, it does represent a compromise between the residents of Southwood and the developer. We actively reached out and sat down with them to try to turn this phase, which, when it was originally presented to us in the summer last year, was diametrically opposed and contravened every iota of our PUD. We had homes with their backyards facing Orange Avenue. We had no street parking. It was literally a train wreck. But the good news is, we have reached a compromise. We have reached something that is, meets the letter, at least largely meets the intent. But I'm here to tell you that the journey to get there to this compromise was not fun. It was arduous, required a lot of work. And the moral of the story is, is but for the intervention of the citizens of Southwood and the act of intervention, we probably would not be here today, and we probably would have a neighborhood that looks nothing like Southwood. And so my urging to this board is, please do not allow the citizens of Southwood to be the sole enforcer of a very voluminous and detailed document that is the zoning document of Southwood. We need you to empower your staff to stand up earlier. If my job is to be the enforcer, and the jobs of my colleagues to be the enforcer of the PUD, to make sure that we fulfill the promise of Southwood and meet the letter and intent of this document, this is going to be a very, very long road. This is a happy ending. There's good news here tonight. But in the future, if each iteration of Southwood is done like this, and Southwood is only 60% built out, we have many more homes and neighborhoods yet to be built. If this is the process, this is no way to run a railroad. We need to make sure that we are upfront and that we enforce the PUD. In the span of six weeks during this process, the replat went from being A-OK with staff to not being A-OK with staff, to then once again being AOA with staff. The vacillations and the adrift nature of some of the discussions around the PUD are very frustrating, and I encourage us to be actively and proactively involved in enforcing the PUD so that we can keep our promises to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Asbury, also on 9.04, and that's the last speaker on this particular item. He will be followed by Rich Tureleki.
Thank you. I'm Tom Asbury, 3084 White Ibis. I am the developer of Unit 32, and I want to say, we did work with the neighbors.
Could you raise the microphone just a little bit? Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
And we did work with them, which is typical of when we're doing any neighborhood. We try to work with all the citizens. I do want to say that I think, I disagree, I think that the intent is being followed by the PUD. I think your staff has done a good job of trying to, of reading the PUD and trying to make sure that things work. I mean, people disagree with the way things look. I think, I think that we tend to, they want all, there tends to be a desire to have all houses with a alley behind them. I disagree that, and I think the PUD doesn't require you to have all houses on alleys. I think major roadway, which they did point out, made more sense to have not driveway cuts on a major roadway, bring those in from the back, and I think that's what you do see in Southwood, that most of the major roadways are on alleys, you know, where the house is front of them. But there are a lot of streets out there that the street, the houses do not have alleys. And it has not changed the nature of that neighborhood. The neighborhood is, I mean, a traditional neighborhood is a walkability, it's various housing types, it's having parks, having commercial and that sort, and that is part of Southwood, and that will never go away. And we like Southwood, and we too want to make sure that it stays healthy and where people like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Rich Tureleki on item 9.06, now 10.01, and also an item pulled from consent. The next speaker will be on a different topic, will be Pat See Yon.
Thank you, Mayor, and honorable Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank or congratulate Mr. Maddox. He is the one that spearheaded the audit and the re-looking at the way the city procures brokerage services. And with the appointment of Brown &amp; Brown at the July 9th meeting, and with the recommendation that was on the consent agenda and has now been pulled, the auditor hit the number right on, and Mr. Maddox should be congratulated because the savings the city is already going to realize over the next 10 years is $1.495 million. So I think the auditor had estimated 1.5, so the auditor was extremely close. One thing that I would like to point out to you is that the selection committee did turn around and choose Arthur J. Gallagher as the number-one respondent. Because we don't have any idea, it's not published as to why an item is pulled from the consent agenda and put up for discussion, but I would like to say that I know, having been in this business for 30 years, that probably, as Commissioners, you all want to make as knowledgeable of a decision as possible. And so with that in mind, I cannot address at this time anything, but there are four of us here from Arthur J. Gallagher today, and I would highly invite any of the Commissioners during discussion to ask us any of the questions that may be of confusing nature or anything like that, because we'd be more than happy to answer any questions that may arise. Lastly, I would point out to you that there's very few cities in the state that have utilities. Your utility makes up 75% of your property values. We turn around and insure and have a specialty niche that deals with nothing but utilities. Lakeland is another one of our clients that has a large utility. It is a special exposure that's totally different than what most other cities and counties have within the state of Florida. So it does take a specialty in that area, and we do possess that. So with that in mind, again, I would just invite you that during your discussion, if there are questions that we can answer that can help you make a more informed and educated decision, please feel free to ask us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Pat See Yon.
And Pat See, what item? I'm sorry?
On item 1301, correct?
Thank you.
And I think she referred to three, so is that Pat See Yon? James Peters is next, and then Rip Colleen. I think those are the speakers we have on that item. So Mr. Peters, followed by --
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. If you would indulge me, I submitted a report concerning my, what was going to be a rant, but it's not going to be a rant.
Thank you.
I think I've got some pictures of your fellow carers, particularly as the code enforcement officer. Snipe signs, those are identical boards for each of the divisions.
We each get one? Thank you.
James A. Peters, 3736 Lifford Circle. I am a just-retired, 35-year litigator for the Attorney General. So at one time, I had anger management issues in light of what I think's about to happen with code enforcement. They're in abeyance for the next few moments, anyway. I've been complaining. I've been visiting, I've been calling, I've been submitting pictures to code enforcement officers for over five years about these very same issues, these very same pictures, these very same locations. To the snipe sign, every one of these signs at a location there has been reported to the code enforcement office for at least a month, for at least a month. I took those pictures Monday afternoon, yesterday, and this morning. And I appreciate very much the agenda item requiring someone to account for code enforcement or lack thereof. In light of that, I have very little to say other than thank you, thank you, thank you. There's an enormous task because of the years of neglect of this subject matter, but I've got great confidence in Mr. Schell and his staff to turn it around and fix this blight on our city that's infected the city for at least five years. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rip Colleen.
I'll go quickly. These are big changes that are being, oh, Rip Colleen, 3048 Godfrey Place. So code enforcement is coming to you with a whole change in direction on the sign code with regard to snipe signs. They're going to enforce it. Hasn't been done in five years at least, according to code enforcement. No notice of violation has ever been issued for these violations, which number on the thousands on our roadsides and our public rights away. We are one of the last cities that I know of that's actually starting to enforce. Leon County has been doing it for two years with one code, sign code enforcer, one. We have seven in this city. Gainesville, Clearwater, St. Pete, Jacksonville, they're all ahead of us. But we're now changing things, and that's a good message. There are five things about these snipe signs I just run through quickly so you see. Number one, there are thousands of them on our roads. And code enforcement, a year and a half ago, said, every month, 1,000 are put up and 1,000 are taken down. And it was getting worse. So that means more than 1,000 were being put up each month. So we're talking thousands. They look like this. Ugliness degrades the look of the city, and the look of the city is important. We know that by surveys. Values of our own citizens, it's high up there. These things, according to code enforcement, present a safety hazard to people in the right-of-way who mow the grass or who walk in the grass. They may, yeah, well, they may, and they're sharp, and they're dangerous. Remember, these things, they last, they last at least for 50 years. This is not cardboard. They give a competitive advantage, which is unfair, to people who violate the law and use public lands to advertise their own good or services. Other businesses comply with the law. Their costs are higher because of that. That's an unfair competitive advantage. And that's why in a focus group that we had on this six months ago, and meetings on with all stakeholders, the Chamber of Commerce representative even said, "It's time to begin enforcing this ban on signs in our right-of-way." And they need to do it actively and firmly and consistently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jenny Daly. She will be followed by Jabari Paul. Ms. Daly's item is, I think, the long-range target update, but she can clarify that if I got that wrong.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Daly. I reside at 703 Live Oak Plantation Road. I am here to speak in support of the city's construction of a sidewalk on Live Oak Plantation Road and Timber Lane School Road. That project was set and approved for funding, along with other sidewalk projects, in this year's budget, and I'm here to support that decision and applaud all of the work that the city staff has been doing. They jumped right on this project and have begun working and are developing a design They jumped right on this project and have begun working and are developing a design that will preserve the trees and the scenic quality of the road. We'd like for you all to give the city staff and their engineering team a chance to let that process work and look to the future of the neighborhood and the possibility of a sidewalk on those streets. There are three reasons to support a sidewalk on the street. The safety hazards, uh, in terms of being a pedestrian or bicyclist on the street, there is no safe bailout area for pedestrians in many areas on the road. Secondly, the traffic volume, there are approximately 5,000 cars every day on that road, and approximately 2,700 cars every day on Timber Lane School Road. In addition, the traffic speeds, as you all know, because you put up, uh, speed signs recently, uh, there is a consistent pattern of speeding on the street. And finally, the street's new status as a minor collector road, which means that it is not just a residential street, it is a connector that connects neighborhoods and residents to the schools, shops, work, jobs, and the community in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our, uh, our next speaker is Jabari Paul, um, on item 1303, which is Ban the Box, and we have a number of speakers on that item.
Good evening. I'm Elder Jabari Paul, an Associate Minister at Philadelphia Primitive Baptist Church in Tallahassee, Florida, and I come before you today in my role as the North Florida Regional Director for an organization called Faith in Florida. Uh, Faith in Florida is made up of roughly 130 member congregations from all across the state of Florida, representing all faith traditions, and those 130 congregations, uh, represent roughly 60,000 families across the state of Florida. And on behalf of all of those congregation members, as well as all of those family units that are in the network of our organization, I want to thank you for your support of the Ban the Box policy and urge everyone's full embrace of the Ban, uh, the Box policy. Uh, we believe that any government is at its best when all of its citizens have an opportunity to be whole members of society and to contribute to society with any, without any biases being held against them. And today, Faith in Florida stands in solidarity with Tallahassee Interfaith Clergy, that is represented by Pastor Brent Copeland with us today, and also Tallahassee Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, that is represented by its President, Reverend Stanley Walker, today. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Katie Blaylock, to be followed by Deborah Jenkins. Katie Blaylock?
Um, I'm here today to talk about, um-
Would you mind just stating your name and address, please?
My name is Katie Blaylock, and I reside at 704 South Swart Street in Perry, Florida. And I'm here to, um, discuss how I feel that, um, I profoundly feel that persons with criminal record should be given a second chance. Um, I feel that, um, there's persons who've been wrongfully accused of, um, malicious allegations that have caused them a lot of hardships, and I believe that they should be given a second chance to prove themselves to society.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is Deborah Jenkins. She will be followed by Wayne Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Jenkins. I live at 829 East Cherry Street in Perry, Florida, and I'm here to be in agreement with Ban the Box, uh, because I myself is one of the people that have been, um, judged because of my past, and, uh, I did my time for what I was pretending to the law. I did the time for what I had, um, I'm sorry, I did the time, I paid my consequences for my actions, but 15 years later, I'm still being looked at as that same person. But I went through the rehabilitation process as the system required me to, but I'm still getting charged for that crime over and over again. And here I am, that was 20, when I was 26, and I'm 52 years old now, unemployed at this time, and trying to seek employment, but when that question becomes on the box and I check it, they already have judged me for that. And this country was built on biblical principles. The prayer that was prayed today was we were praying to God, and God said, "Forgive," because He forgives. And I believe that we should be forgiven for our wrongdoings and given that second chance. I thank God for you all and the clergymen that are going forth with this law banning the box, and I just say, you know, give us a chance. I know that there are people that constantly repeat, 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 but there are some of us out there that have been rehabilitated, have changed our lives, and want the opportunity to be productive citizens in life. Amen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne Jenkins, and then we will hear from Andy Thomas.
My name is Wayne Jenkins, and I also reside at 829 East Cherry Street. I'm also a convicted felon, and, uh, I do face the same challenges that every other felon faces when it comes to trying to get a job and trying to improve my life. Um, I have gone to college, you know, getting an education, you know, but it, nothing seems to count when it, when it, when you go down and you put in an application, and they look and they see where you had a felony on your record, then they want to dismiss you right away. I feel that, that we ought to get a second chance, because there are, like my wife's just said, that was my wife just ahead of me, she just said, "We are trying. We're trying to do and be productive citizens of society, and we need that second chance." That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andy Thomas, and then Dennis Smith.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Andy Thomas. I'm Chief Assistant with the Public Defender's Office. I live at 1203 Gardenia Drive in Tallahassee. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, the two people that just spoke are my clients, almost all of my clients. We think about convicted felons, and the first thing that comes to mind is Ted Bundy or people crawling in people's windows, this type of thing. That's not most of our clients. Uh, we have to realize how easy it is to violate the law and end up either with a withheld adjudication on probation or a convicted felon. You can do that for driving without a license three times. You can do that for getting to pay your child support and losing your license. You can do that for getting to pay your taxes as a businessman. There are any number of reasons. What this is about is not excluding a huge population of people that want hope and want an opportunity to work. The two things, people transitioning into society from prison or from any other thing or just on probation, what they need is safe place to live and a job. You give them that, there's a 57% chance, less chance that they will reoffend. I think that's vitally important. Now, there is a concern that I think business and city could raise. Well, it costs money to, you know, interview people and try and hire someone. If we go too far, this could be oppressive to us. It doesn't have to be. All we're asking for is that when someone fills out an application, they don't have to be, uh, thrown away right away just because they checked something. And if they get to the interview process, the city will do the background check anyway. That is not, uh, unduly burdensome to give people a chance. Uh, I really urge this commission to adopt this ordinance. Symbolically, you don't know what it will mean to my clients when I can sit down with them and say, "Look here, we're trying. The city's trying. The city does so many progressive, good things. If we can save the trees, save parks, have the greatest parks in the world, why can't we do this?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Smith will be followed by Dale Landry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Miss, uh, Manager, and fellow Commissioners. My name is Dennis Smith of 325 Macon Road. I'm currently the Territory Account Manager for a major processing company that does merchant services. I'm a convicted felon. To say a process to this point was difficult would be an understatement.
Gotcha.
Had it not been for the grace of God and members of my church compassionately reaching out to me in construction and other menial jobs, I wouldn't be here. Even with a college education, I wouldn't be here. I currently am involved with a ministry, a nonprofit, that gives men straight off the bus of prison and jail, a place to stay, food, and clothing for six months. I see the zeal when they get off the bus to do the right thing. I see that. But days and weeks and sometimes months, if they last that long, the fire diminishes because their application gets put to the side because of this very thing that I incurred over and over again. But because there were people encouraging me and my faith, I'm here with a very good job. And this is why, when I heard about this today, I just happened to call your office, sir, and your scheduler told me about this, and I had to come here and just lend my support that you banned this, because that one guy was me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Landry, uh, followed by Jim McShane.
My name is Dale Landry, 1940 Antico Circle, Tallahassee, Florida, and, um, first of all, I want to say, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of the Tallahassee Branch of NAACP International, NAACP. And, uh, I'm here because generally, as you all know, I tried to work and do what I do one-on-one and behind the scenes, but it didn't work. I want to say, I want to thank one Commissioner for stepping up that said they didn't mind doing this, and, uh, and the other one had an issue, but yet at this time, I'm not going to do it here, I'm just going to make the statement, I'm here because I thought I had to come. Folks, this issue, at first, I was coming prepared for one thing until I found out that on all employees for the city, you're going to do a background check, irregardless if they're even a janitor, a background check is going to be done. The box is discriminatory. I'm going to put it on the table. It's a discriminatory action. It's meant to discriminate, because if you're doing a background check anyway, why are we bothering with them coming in the door? Now, I want to note this because of the period. We all just joined together for MLK Day, and this is one of the things that Dr. King was voracious against, discrimination. It's discriminatory, I'm going to call it, I'm going to tell it, and you're going to hear about it again at the next election. It's discriminatory. My point I want to make is this, I'm very angry about it, because as I sit here and we come up, we just sat up and talked about how much we love Dr. King, we just did this whole week behind Dr. King's birthday, but more importantly, we all sat and watched Selma. Many of us did. And many of the things that this box represents, represents Selma. We're doing it all because it's still there. Just like they did in Selma, we had to change and let people vote. It's an archaic instrument that no longer has a reason to be in here. So I want to come up here, and I just had to say that to you, and had to share that, as I sat back and the things that were going through my mind about this, Dale Landry is angry, the NAACP is angry. In our great city, we are moving forward. We're doing some great things, we have some good people here. All the idiots that are out there trying to convince us to keep that box, we need to go ahead and tell them, "We're ready to fight." I will mobilize our folk in Tallahassee, and we'll mobilize from the state and come in here. What I just handed you is not Dale Landry, this came from the National NAACP. We have called for banning the box because it discriminates, and it discriminates against black people. And that needs to be said, and needs to be known. And we need to let you know that because all of the others have been lumped in with our black people, because now they have all become colored, which is what it is, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. Get rid of the box so we can advance colored people.
The next speaker is Jim McShane, and then will be Gregory James.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and, uh, City Manager, for allowing me to speak in front of you. I serve as the CEO of Career Source Capital Region, and as you know, that is the Regional Workforce Board for Gadsin, Leon, and Waculla Counties. And our mission is to connect employers with the qualified, skilled talent that we have in our area. That talent pipeline we serve ranges from youth needing to acquire skills in order to enter the workforce, all the way to degreed professionals looking for executive level career opportunities. In addition, we also serve job seekers who have one or more barriers to employment. To clarify, having a, a criminal background in itself is not a barrier. The actual barriers include the potential lack of a current marketable skill set, and oftentimes employers' unwillingness to hire people with criminal convictions. The concern with the latter is twofold. The first is that by not giving individuals with a criminal background a fair chance, employers may be opening themselves up for discrimination lawsuits. This occurs when candidates are screened out solely on the basis of having a criminal background without regard to whether their specific background issue is relevant to the industry and occupation for which the candidate is seeking work. A related side effect is that by discriminating against this population, we increase the likelihood of them reoffending. And as we all know, high recidivism rates have a negative social and economic impact. Secondly, and more importantly, employers, including the city, may sometimes disregard candidates who actually possess the right skill sets that they're looking for. With the city being one of the larger employers in our community, we are concerned that screening candidates out too early in the process may impact your ability to effectively meet your talent needs. Not to mention, the affected candidates do not have the opportunity to be fairly evaluated on their knowledge and their skills and their abilities. As the Regional Workforce Board, we offer job seekers in our community access to skill assessments, career development, training assistance, and opportunities to connect with local employers. These services are also available to people with former, uh, criminal convictions. However, the employer challenge remains. As the Regional Workforce Board preparing to ready the workforce for the needs of our local employers, we are excited about the pill, of the possibility that the initiative like Ban the Box can mean for this community. If the city is willing to lead the charge by taking a positive stance that communicates the value of not screening candidates out too early in the process, this could have a tremendous ripple effect to the business community as a whole. One employer incentive administered through Career Source Capital Region that supports the hiring of hard-to-place candidates is the federal bonding program. This program issues fidelity bonds as, uh, to business insurance, as an insurance policy that protects the employer in case of a loss of money, property, or anything due to dishonesty.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I fully support the mayor on this.
Next speaker is Gregory James, followed by Dominique James.
Gregory James, 4409 Blustown Highway, um, certainly Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners, um, we're, we're here again. The last time we were here, I left really disheartened, because I think about tonight, all of the pastors that support this issue. There's so many men and women who are in this audience tonight who have re-entered back into society. There's a young man who I worked with closely, I remember coming back into society with, ended up homeless, but was determined. Now he's getting his masters. They're men who have started at the bottom of some of their employment opportunities, now serving as managers. And even my own personal life, after being sentenced to life plus 40 years in federal prison, um, going to a halfway house with such a demand that you got to get a job, if you don't get a job, we're going to send you back to prison. I remember volunteering at a, at a Crystal Burger to work, just to keep from going back to prison. I worked three days for free, just to keep from going back. Walked in the mall one day in Pensacola, Florida, saw a sign that said, "We're now hiring at Sprint." I walked into the store, saw a lady come in, was interested in buying a phone, because I was studying phones, I was going to get a phone. I knew everything about the BlackBerry, so I started conversing with her. As a matter of fact, ended up selling her the phone and turned it over to the manager. He said immediately, "I'm hiring you." I said, "You sure you're going to hire me?" He said, "Of course." I said, "Why?" He said, "Man, I like the way you articulate, I like the knowledge that you have about the phone." I said, "Are you sure you're going to hire me?" He said, "Man, I'm hiring you." I said, "Well, let me tell you this, I'm living at Brent Lane at the federal halfway house, are you still hiring me?" He said, "Well, that just changed everything." I said, "But before you knew that, and you heard me articulate, and you heard me share knowledge about the phone, you was giving me an opportunity." And just like my brother just finished saying, if I wasn't strong enough, that would have deterred me. But I ended up saying, "If you said you was going to hire me based on what you just saw, then why not stick to that?" He said, "Well, I'm going to go up the chain." He went up the chain, I worked at Sprint for six months, I became the Assistant Sales Manager. They offered me a managerial- They offered me a managerial spot. I said, "No, I got to go back to Tallahassee, but thank you anyway." I want to say today that there are so many men and women who are coming out looking for an opportunity to work because that's one thing you do inside of prison, you work. And you don't work for minimum wage, but you work. You learn work ethics. Because of my determination, I've been invited to federal prisons to speak. I've taught classes in Department of Correction prisons on federal probation because they say, "Men need to see that they can make a difference." So I pledge today, along with so many others, that, listen, all we're doing today is saying, "Let's give equal access to those who are returning back into society." As Mr. Landry said, a background check is automatically going to be done. But when you sit down and talk to me, and I share with you what I'm doing, it gives you a different insight on the checking of the box. So let's give equal access. We cannot continue to have release granted and access denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Commissioners, we've reached the 30-minute mark, and typically, the Treasury Clerk orders the speakers based off of the order of the items, which means that there were speaker slips that were submitted before some of the speakers who had spoke to us. If the commission is, we don't normally run against this problem to the audience because we've never run up against a 30-minute rule that we've set. Treasury Clerk, can you just mention how many additional speakers do we have?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we have five remaining speakers on this item. The additional speakers we have, do have a number more, but they are on unagended items, primarily on the Live Oak Plantation sidewalks. We did hear from one speaker, but that actually is an unagended item, so those would be at the end of the meeting, so we have five more on this topic.
What's the will?
Let's hear the speakers.
If there's no objection, we'll continue with the remaining five speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Then first of those will be Dominique James, followed by Ronald Nelson.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the DRS and our great citizens of the Tallahassee community. I am Dominique L. James, and I stand before you today not only as a student at Florida A&amp;M University, but to represent the students of every university that we have here in Tallahassee on the item of the box ban. There are already 12 other states that are for this great topic, and cities including Columbus, Cincinnati, and Cleveland that are all saying, "We need to ban this box." From a student's perspective, I would hate to be penalized for something 20 or 30 years from now for a mistake that I could have made as an adolescent or in my younger years when I may not have known any better, may not have the right guidance to push me forward and to propel me into my future. So I ask that you all today, I thank you all in advance for supporting this item because I know that you will, number one, make the right choice. And although I was not born here in Tallahassee, or I may not have been raised here, I have taken Tallahassee on as my home, and I proudly have a Tallahassee address on my Florida ID. And I would like to one day say that I'm proud that justice is always the number one priority here in Tallahassee, Florida, and that I know that we do not look backward into our rearview mirror, saying that we are looking forward into our windshield into a wider range of success, that we're moving forward with our society, we're moving forward with our students, we're moving forward with everyone that is here in Tallahassee, to say that we want a brighter future. And we understand that you may have had some hiccups in the past, but as all of us are sitting here today, we may have all been someplace in one point in time, but thank God for greatness and for people like you all sitting up here to say that we support you in whatever endeavors that you look for in the future, and we're going to help you and assist you here in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ronald Nelson. He'll be followed by Allison DeFoe.
Say that name again, please.
Ronald Nelson.
Ronald Nelson.
If not, okay, there we go, and then followed by Allison DeFoe.
Thank you, Mayor Gillum and Commissioners, for this opportunity. I am Ronald Nelson at 659 Elidira Lane. Myself, along with the campus of Florida A&amp;M, fully support the box ban in order to improve economic development within the city of Tallahassee and decrease the unemployment rates as well. As my counterpart, my fellow rattler, Dominique L. James, said, "We could be penalized for a mistake that we did make today as college students and adolescents and coming of age." It'll be a great, not only for ourselves as students, but the citizens of Tallahassee who do look for that second chance. Please vote to for this initiative, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mr. DeFoe will be Marsha Thomas.
My name's Allison DeFoe. I'm chairman of the Project on Accountable Justice at Florida State University, Baylor, Tallahassee Community College, and St. Petersburg College. The direct correlation between having a job and recidivism is pretty clear in the data, and to the extent that we can allow that to happen and encourage it, that's a good thing. The results of this sort of legislative activity are uncertain because it's relatively new, and we'll want to chart that as it goes forward. But the idea of how we deal with people when they come out is really very, very important. One of the major cities that we get to in the state that has dealt with, trying to deal with this, realized that they woke up with 30,000 young men and four ZIP codes with guns and no jobs, and as a result, they're the murder capital of the United States. And I won't name the city, but we can probably guess which one it is. These are the kind of consequences that we have to project out long-term. Nationally, you're starting to get a very broad coalition looking at these issues and with a pretty good set of common eyes. Everybody from the Southern Poverty Law Center on the left to the Koch Brothers on the right are ending up in the same place. And I think I can illustrate that if my own presence doesn't enough as a former vice chairman of the Republican Party of Florida by quoting from Mark Levin, who's the director of Right on Crime, which is a pretty conservative group out of Texas at the Texas Public Policy Institute. And it's gathered up people on justice reform issues, some real wild-eyed liberals like Newt Gingrich and Grover Norquist and Jeb Bush and a few others. And he says the following on this specific issue. "There's been a shift in people away from wanting to get even. People are focused now on getting results. It is really a great benefit to public safety if ex-offenders are able to get jobs, find places to live, and get occupational licenses, whether it's from the perspective of the ex-offender or for those of us who are going to live next door to them." I think that says it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marsha Thomas, followed by O'Neal Jacks, and those are the remaining and final two speakers on this topic. Everyone else will be unagended at the later time of the meeting.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marsha Thomas, and I live at 3200 Everton Lane, Tallahassee, Florida. I am one that has a charge that I'm going through. Like, right now, I've been fighting for the last maybe three and a half years to get an exemption, just to get a job that the job offers has, you know, been very patient with me. But I have a NOLA process on a charge that they are denying me for work, and they're denying me my rights to the charge when I have a NOLA process from the judge, and I'm taking it to the employees, and they're not honoring it. And like, as of right now, I'm fighting right now with the office to get a court hearing with the judge. They've been playing around and denying me that I'm without a job. I have four kids, you know, and I'm just, you know, I appreciate if y'all can grant me in the box because I am one of those that's being discriminated against a charge that I have had years ago, and that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
O'Neal Jacks?
Jackson.
Jackson, okay. That's all right, you get three minutes to speak.
I don't have to give my name again, but I want to thank the City Manager and the Mayor on the administrative decision to drop the box. That's an administrative thing, I understand. Now, when I went into the Army, I volunteered. I was told that everybody in our society, the United States of America, would get an Even though some people has made mistakes, they have gotten, or they should be given, a second chance. I can remember a couple of years ago, some of our Commissioners' names were on the front pages in the media. "We gave you a second chance." So now, you are determining, or you will be trying to make a decision for others. I think, and like I said earlier, this is the City Manager's administrative decision, but it would be 100% nice if all of you Commissioners gave the City Manager a thumbs up on this. We are missing out on many of people with talents and skills because of this box. To mention some of the, I can remember several years ago, not too many, that the word deregulation on the energy was a big issue in California. And we had some Commissioners who wanted the city of Tallahassee to sell our utility company. We are now the number-one public utility company in the United States of America. And I do think that you, again, should give the Mayor and the City Manager a thumbs up and, without any hesitation, support her and him on this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the last speaker on that item. Mr. Jackson, if you would, would you provide your address on this form so that we can keep that for the record?
Mr. Jackson, as you make your way back to your seat, the manager whispered over to me that this is the first time you've ever agreed with her, and it was worth noting. I want to thank, I think that's, he said he will disagree. I want to thank everyone who gave public testimony tonight. It's obviously not an easy thing to do to come down and petition your government on any new range of situation, and we thank you for doing that. We're going to now move forward with the remainder of the agenda. Commissioners, we're now at the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent items except those pulled?
One point oh seven.
Nine point oh seven, no speakers?
There were no speakers on nine point oh seven?
Nine point oh seven, it was pulled. Right.
No speakers on nine point oh seven?
No speakers on nine point oh seven. I'm just flipping through them one last time. I see none.
Okay. Commissioners, is there a motion and a second to move consent except for those items pulled? All in favor, let me know by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Now we're going on to the items that were pulled from consent. Ten, I believe it's nine point zero six, and that was pulled by Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, you might remember, and Commissioner Richardson, you were not here, but I started the process of looking to change the way we choose our insurance broker by decoupling, going out for an RFP for a broker versus a broker coupled with the lines of insurance. And like one of the speakers testified earlier, the audit that I ordered came back and said that savings would be $1.5 million over a 10-year period. And we are, the results that we have back from that are right along the lines of what we thought the savings would be. It was not without discussion, vigorous discussion, to get us to that point, but here we are. I, you know, staff makes a recommendation, I don't want to fault staff on their recommendation, I just simply disagree with it, and I'll tell you why. First of all, the original conversation I had that alerted me to the fact that we were leaving a lot of dollars on the table for the city of Tallahassee was with Bill Gunter of Roger Gunner Vaughn Insurance, who's a former insurance commissioner, and pointed this out on behalf of, and said, "The city can save money here," and basically pushed and gave me the information that allowed us to save this money. How we deal with bond underwriters, for instance, we will have a pool of qualified bond underwriters, and we choose, if one of the qualified bond underwriters brings us something that saves money, they get the opportunity to write the bonds for that, what they brought forward. We don't take their ideas and then give it to the other, to one of their competitors in the pool. So I feel like those folks have gone the extra mile on giving us a resulting savings. The second thing is, in the RFP, and I went through the RFP rankings, I disagree with experiencing past performance, the rankings of Pria and Roger Gunner on both of those. Certainly since the past performance just recently of Pria and Gunner has saved our city $35,000, why they could be ranked so low there is, to me, I just disagree with. Experience, I certainly disagree with. In the RFPs, their response has specific cities and counties where they have saved money, and the number-one recommended firm had examples, but they weren't given who they were, it's in a Florida city and a Florida county. So I disagree with those rankings. I disagree also on, the RFP speaks to disqualification or nonresponsiveness if they don't give a flat fee proposal with intermediary coverage or through a wholesale broker. The Pria-Roger-Gunner response gives a flat fee of 4%, not to exceed $115,000. The number-one recommendation has 5% domestic and 10% international, but no flat fee. And even though that doesn't preclude them from directly placing the lines of insurance, that could result in a higher cost there, and I think most likely would. And finally, Pria, who's ranked number two, is less expensive. So I think both of the firms are extremely qualified. I think both of them do a lot of work around not only the state but the nation, and they're both qualified. But given the fact that one of them has performed for us in the past, number one. Number two, brought us ideas to save us money. And number three, is a low-cost provider, I think they're the most responsive bidder. And so I would move that the city hire Pria-Rogers-Gunner.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a motion and a second?
Could I have a clarification? Would you, I'm seconding it because I'm a little confused. The flat fee, would you explain that again? There are two fees. There's the overall fee for brokerage, and which Pria quoted $115,000, and Gallagher quoted $125,000. Then there's the fee if they use an intermediary, which is a wholesale broker, that will come between the broker and the lines of insurance. Pria responded with a 4%, but a floor of not to, a ceiling, and not to exceed $115,000, and the RFP asked for a flat fee. Gallagher did 5% if it's domestic insurance, 10% if it's international, but without a flat fee, without a ceiling.
But the RFP required that.
It's what it says in the RFP.
Commissioner, if I may add a thought to that, I think each of those figures sounds correct from what was provided in the responses. On the intermediary portion, well, first to the broker portion, the $125,000 fee quoted by Gallagher and the $115 by Pria, those were considered as part of the scoring. Fees are scored, and so those items were taken into account. And in fact, Pria did rank number one in the scoring portion of the evaluation. On the intermediary fee, the intermediary determination couldn't be done with any precision, even in the case where Pria provided a cap. The request was, could you provide a flat fee? And there's a wide variation, even in that, could be anywhere from 0 to 115. The procurement agent worked with the evaluation committee, and I think in our process, agreed that we could score the numbers that we know, the numbers that we're paying to these brokers, but that the intermediary calculation was not able to be calculated. So a cap of 115, a cap of 115 would be great if the other, otherwise number would be 150, but if another, if the number would otherwise be 25, then the cap never comes into play. So there was no flat fee in, in either of the two top-ranked proposals. There was not a flat fee, which was what we were hoping we would be able to find. We did have in the third place firm, they did provide a, a single all-in number for the individual broker providing the response, as well as their intermediary cost.
Just a follow-up.
And that may be something that, that our procurement folks would need to, to assist us with.
But didn't Pria have a not-to-exceed number?
Yes.
Did Gallagher have a not-to-exceed number?
No, sir.
Okay. Did, did the RFP say propose intermediary, flat annual fee?
Said flat, yes.
Thanks.
I believe that's correct. I'm looking to make sure. Yeah, I get, yeah, yeah, exactly. So it, the RFP said flat, we only got one flat, and that was from the third-ranked firm. We got a percentage from the top-ranked firm, we got a percentage with a cap, which is not the same as a flat fee from the second-ranked firm. That was the, the decision process.
Got it. Other, other comments, commissioners? Side them?
Go.
If not, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say no.
No.
How'd you vote?
I didn't vote.
Well, that's nice.
I'm actually still thinking about this whole.
I want to second that.
I'm actually still, still thinking about this whole item. Some of the concerns that were raised came frankly to me a little bit late, and I didn't have the opportunity to completely digest them. So really where I am is really seeking an opportunity to ferret through this a little bit further, and I don't know what the timeliness is around this, but.
Commissioner, I will, I will point out that I, I did get a, a couple of similar questions from the representatives from Pria this morning, have not had an opportunity to, to get, get back to them. I would like to point out that our procurement process provides a, an opportunity for protest. The scores were posted, there were no protests within the 72-hour window. We've attempted to follow your, your direction to decouple the process, provide a, a broker selection evaluation, have gone through that and followed our city procurement process, and again, had not had any specifics to, to address or consider until this point. We do have, and, and the, the respondents may, may need to speak to this if, if you wish, we are, on January 28th, our coverage needs to be in place by May 1st. If approval tonight would leave essentially 90 days, probably a little bit under that based on the timing of our April commission calendar, I think we are best served to make a, a decision tonight. We don't have a meeting on February the 11th, even that would probably tighten their time window. We do meet again on February 28th, which would then leave them with 60 days or less, I'm sorry, 25th, on the February 25th. So that would leave 60 days or, or less to, to put together a program on, on what everybody recognizes as a, as a pretty detailed process, given the, the scope of our, our values.
And what role does, what role does cost play in your analysis? So if you're dealing with two highly qualified firms, where does cost show up? I know in some contracts we have lowest responsive bid, and I'm not sure how this, how this was assessed.
We had, and again, there are no questions that I'm aware of on the, on the, the process, and our, our RFP and scoring provided for 75 points, I'm doing the quick math, yep, 75 points for a variety of areas, experience, ability, past performance, understanding of the project, an approach and method, and then 25 points for fees, so that in, in this case, the ability qualifications, experience, understanding of our program is weighted more highly than the fees. Fees are obviously significant, that's part of, that's, that's a major reason why we decoupled our, our process. And, and again, we have a range in those fees from 25 to 11. The, the space between top-ranked firm Arthur Gallagher had a total of 100 points, and Pria had a total of 88 points. So we would have to have a pretty significant change in fees or any other given category to, to make a change there.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, in going over the, the scores, you know, what we got to realize is this is highly subjective. So we got the committee scores of individual people that were on a committee, and they're just numbered 1 through 5, so we don't know who e, each one of these is. But if number four alone ranked Pria significantly lower, enough to skew it between Pria and Arthur Gallagher. Experience, and, and I, to me, Pria and Arthur Gallagher are both very highly qualified firms. So they're, they're highly qualified, they both handle a lot of public entities, so I, I don't know how they could beat this much disparity. Experience and ability, a 16 for Pria and a 29 for Arthur Anderson. Arthur Gallagher, I'm sorry. Past performance, 17 for Pria, 24 for Arthur Gallagher, even though we know that Pria has saved us recently a lot of money. Understanding of project and project requirements, a 7 for Pria and a 10 for Arthur Gallagher. Approach and method, an 8 for Pria and a 10 for Arthur Gallagher. So basically, one person's score sheet tilts the recommendation that we have coming here. So, you know, I think that's the reason why you have a staff recommendation and it comes to the commission. So the commission can make, we, we have five people here that can make our own determination as to what we think is best and with both firms, and that's the reason behind my motion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. To that point, I, I might also suggest that you have a, that's part of why you have a five-member evaluation committee, so that you have, or any number on a given proposal for the city. We put those together so that you do have a number of people independently looking at them, and, and the score that determines the ranking and recommendation to the commission is a, is a composite result of that, it's a, a committee recommendation. Don't disagree that any given, any given person may have made significant difference between the firms, but I think in this case, each of the five committee members had the same ranking as we currently have in the, in the recommendation, so, so the disparity between may have been.
That's not the case.
And if that's not the case.
Yeah, looking at the numbers, that doesn't bear out, but so, the problem is when you have a committee with five people, whether it's intentional or non-intentional, I mean, it can just happen this way. If, if one of the people is willing to rank one person really low and one person really high, that skewers the overall numbers of the committee recommendation, if everyone else ranks them close. So if you have everyone, you know, I'll give you for instance, numbers that are not in these numbers, but just for instance, numbers. I rank A 9 and B 10, and the mayor ranks the opposite, and Commissioner Miller ranks 8 and 10, and Commissioner Ziffer does 9 and 10, and Commissioner Curtis Richardson does 1 and 15, then that firm will be out. Whoever the 1 is, those numbers will be out. So this happens in RFP selections all the time with committee recommendations, and, you know, like I said, whether it's intentional or unintentional, that's why they come to us. So we're supposed to use our best judgment on what we think as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll tell you what, my general practice really is not to circumvent the process that we have in place, and I, I am really uncomfortable anytime, anytime we do that. Complicating this particular one is what is very fresh in our memory, and that is, is the interruption to this process that took place, that if, frankly, if I were staff, I would not feel very good about. And that was when this commission had this item before us before, we circumvented staff recommendation and went for the, the second firm, who had to come here, testify and lay bare their issues with the, with the staff's assessment. And I've seen it happen in other departments where that factors into the, to the equation. And that coupled with a couple of other concerns that I heard again at the last minute here, I personally want to look more deeply at it, because I think it's a very, very big deal anytime you circumvent, or overturn rather, a recommendation that has come through the committee process. We also may want to look more closely at, particularly where you've got a five-member panel, whether or not you take mean scores versus the average of the total. And I think that gets at, the truth is, is treasurer clerk's office is always going to have more people in that process than anyone else. And the reason why that is, is because you want your experts at the table assessing these things based off of their level of expertise, and those individuals exist in the treasurer clerk's office. So I'm never persuaded by the fact that the treasurer clerk has more people on the evaluation committee than any other department. That being said, in situations like this, where there's been a little contention in the process, and we've stepped in and kind of over, not overreached, but certainly took from below and brought above, it, it, it has, it has an impact. And so I'd love to frankly, have the opportunity to assess other merits on this, on this situation. I didn't vote because I was frankly uncomfortable with the motion, but also uncomfortable with the alternative, which is to say I fully endorse the steps that were taken. So I don't know if other commissioners have thoughts on that. Commissioner Miller?
Well, I do. I share your concern and your, well, I think your feeling that, I think you expressed a feeling that you just really are not comfortable voting at this point. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I'm really not comfortable voting on this at this point. I'd like for every sing, this is too important for us to take, basically vote for the one way or the other based on anything other than a, a comfort level. And so what I'd like to ask of the treasurer clerk, and I want to appreciate all the work that you've done and all the talking that we've done about this, I want to take every concern that's been expressed here tonight and have you come back to us and tell us individually in briefings. Basically, I want to table this. I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion until our next meeting. At that meeting, we will decide what is to be done, but I want to understand, without knowing who the people are, what they're, I don't need to know that. What I need to know is why there is discrepancy, and I think we discussed that earlier today. What the treasurer clerk shared with me was that when there were, that's why you have five people, because the five people have different opinions about a company's ability or non-ability, and strengths or weaknesses. So I really want to know though, more specifics about what makes those differences show up the way they do. And between now and then, I don't know how you want to present it to us, maybe you could take a few minutes at the retreat next week and do a period of time, I don't know, but I just really don't feel comfortable with this, and I'd make a motion to table. I don't know if I have a second.
There's a, well, the motion would have technically failed, the previous one, so is there a second to the motion?
First, so we have a motion with 2 to 2 with an abstention?
Well, not an abstention, and.
Well, that's, that's what I want to.
I, I, I think the only way we need to get out of this is the maker of the motion would, would.
Withdraw.
Withdraw the, the motion. Otherwise.
In the second.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
I'll, I'll have to vote clearly.
I'll have to vote.
Yeah, right. And if we have to do it tonight, then I will have to vote, but.
My comment was going to be, I don't, I don't want to get into the habit of doing a, a motion and a second and a half vote and a stop and a do-over, so to speak. We did this last meeting with, with the band the box, and now we're doing it with an insurance vote. I don't want to get in the habit of this commission stopping votes in the middle because they may not necessarily be going either way. It's just inappropriate, I think. So I don't know how to proceed. The motion was made by Commissioner Maddox.
Mayor called for a vote.
Yeah.
So.
So.
If, if the maker of the motion doesn't withdraw the motion.
Then I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay.
If that's the.
We'd do it either way, that, that's your pleasure. I mean, with you.
My preference, obviously, is to.
Would you rather me withdraw?
Yeah.
I withdraw the motion.
Great. So we have another motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to table. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. This motion is tabled until the next meeting, and in between time, I think we'll all set up appointments. I think part of what's complicating this is, and this is a statement to the public, when these issues are raised at the last minute, right before a commission meeting, makes it very difficult for us to do the job we need to do by listening to the diversity of concerns that have come from our constituents. The second, I think, item to point out is that there is a process in place for legitimate appeals. And I, I don't really know how this all plays out in this sector, but you ought to exercise that process and, 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 and not allow political influence to frankly be the driver behind how these things end up making it to us. So I feel comfortable with having a legitimate airing out of the concern. I think to overturn staff recommendation is a big deal, but there are some legitimate concerns here. In fact, I will bring them up if my item is next, that I have on the next item that I think has come from the treasurer clerk's office, and actually, it may not be the next item.
Mr. Mayor?
It's the one after. So commissioners, there's been a motion and approval. Commissioner Richardson?
Just a quick comment.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, and I, you know, I think there were certainly legitimate issues raised at the very last minute, and, and I, but they were absolutely legitimate issues to be raised, but at the, at the 11th hour almost, when we're about to, to take this vote, you know, I, I'm not sure that it was fair to us. I, I don't have a problem with tabling it, as long as it doesn't jeopardize our ability to have this coverage in place by that, what, May 1st deadline, because that really puts us in a precarious situation.
And commissioners, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
You know, so, so, and so that was, that was part of my reason for voting against the motion. The other part is, you know, I, I guess I've in some instances been in the position of staff, where I've sat on selection committees, and I know the time and effort that is put into that. And, and I think in most instances, those individuals will earnestly come back to us with what they think is the best recommendation. And, and if we put ourselves in a position where we're second guessing staff, then that kind of sends a chilling effect to them, and, and if I were staff, I would say, well, hell, you guys just make the decision, we'll, we'll send all of them to you and let you make the decision. But if we want our staff to be involved in that, then, you know, there's, there's got to be some trust there at, at some point.
Commissioner Maddox?
Well, it's got to be an in-between. If, if, if all we're going to do is rubber stamp staff recommendation, then why, I don't want to vote on it. Don't bring it to me. I'd, I'd rather, I don't understand it. If, if we, we're asked our opinion time after time after time, it's our job to do our homework and make the best decision that we possibly can make. It's not our job just to rubber stamp what comes to us. So, and I don't mind on some of these, hearing them directly from the commission, I know many commissions do that around the state of Florida. Here are oral presentations and rank, rank firms themselves, but as long as it is agenda and required under city policy and ordinances for us to come, as long as we are required under the charter to hold the purse strings and to make these decisions, then we have to make them. We can't just abdicate them, in my opinion.
And I'll just say in response to that, I do, I do think that there is an in-between, but in the, in the instance that we set out a process, one I assume endorsed by this commission, and if it isn't endorsed by this commission, this commission needs to come back to the table and say, we don't like the process, and therefore we change it completely. But in the instance where we say, we're going to have a professional-level staff evaluate based off their expertise and make a set of recommendations, I put a lot of faith and confidence in that set of recommendations. And I think where the rub comes, and this is where I think the in-between is, is that when legitimate concerns are raised about that process, we absolutely should weigh in, and we absolutely should say, this is legit, and we have had evidence of doing that, on the contract that came before us on asphalt. There was a piece in that contract that said, in order to compete, you got to be able to produce cement as well. Well, that didn't make a lot of sense, but that was what the professional staff recommended, and we using our judgment, whether better or not, our elected official judgment said, take it back out and bring something back that doesn't have that included because it doesn't have the bearing. So I agree, I don't think we're rubber stamping by any means. I think what we're saying is, there has to be some efficacy to the process. Professional staff recommendations do matter, and they matter a lot to me. And when there are legitimate concerns brought up that, that, that would substantiate us, us changing that process, I'm more than happy to do it. My concern here was, the issues came late, I found some resonance in them, but we didn't have the complete time to. have the complete time to totally ferret it out. Commissioner Maddox? I mean, I'm so sorry, Ziffer?
I didn't hear what you said.
Y'all look a lot alike, man. Welcome to my world.
I think we're all saying, to a degree, the same thing, which is, we rely on staff, and we rely on the people that evaluate things for our staff. They bring those to us, but yet, we are the ones that ultimately make that decision because ultimately, we're the ones that are going to be held accountable for whatever happens from that decision. And what enters into this at some point is, if we get information at the last minute, and it changes our views towards something, and that's coupled with some of our own personal experiences because of knowledge of who these folks are and what they've done for us in the past, that has to affect us. We're human. And so if we are to be machines, and we're just supposed to rubber stamp, as you know, Commissioner Maddox suggested, I don't want any part of that either. This particular case, where things that were presented to me at the end, not to mention because of what they have done for us in the past several months since they've worked for us, that impacted what I thought, and I defend that. And I'll defend my decision on that and my seconding of that motion. But clearly, this commission wants to hear more from the two parties that we seem to be having a conflict with. So let's do that, and then we'll discuss this again, either at retreat or in February.
Commissioner Miller followed by Commissioner Richardson?
Mayor, you brought up a change in mechanism, for example, the mean versus, and I think another way is to throw out the lowest score, and then see how it all plays out in each case, in each line, for each company. That's fair. And when you do that, and that's what I plan to do, actually, when I go back. Now, I want to, I want to point out that I got the score sheet today at, when, during executive session, and I had not asked for it, but Commissioner Maddox did, and treasurer clerk then provided it as quickly as possible. So it wasn't any falling down on the duties on his part. But I think that I get a lot of feedback from the community about contracting, and everyone, of course, when they don't get the contract, feels there's bias. That is across the board. Whoever doesn't get it always feels that way. And I think that in order to rule that out, throwing out the lowest score is what I'm going to do when I get back up to my office, unless it's nine o'clock tonight, and look and see how it falls out at the end of that time. But I know that in every case, there is, you know, people, you know, they are crazy about one person and maybe not so crazy about somebody else. And I think we need to reevaluate how we do go forward and set up these evaluations with contracting, because just as you all said, depending on, one person can literally move the needle to the point that it just knocks somebody out of the ballpark, and they can move it in one category. So I am not a fan of that method, and would like to hear some staff discussion, actually, not just from the treasurer clerks, but from the manager and so on, about how we might approach these scoring sheets differently in the future.
Commissioner Richardson followed by Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly hope none of my colleagues perceived anything I said as suggesting that we rubber stamp anything that comes from staff. I didn't, that was not my intent. If anybody heard me say anything like that, I just want to make it clear that I would never suggest that.
We got it. We've seen you operate in the legislature, my friend. We know you're not a rubber stamp.
But I think, Commissioner... I think, though, what Commissioner Miller is suggesting, and I think it's a good suggestion, is that we look at the process. And that's certainly something that we can look at, and in the interim between now and when this comes back, maybe we can look at the process and how those scoring sheets are handled. But we've got to give that kind of direction to staff, I think, and then have some faith in them that, once we give them that clear direction on how we want this handled, then that not we would rubber stamp, but have faith in them because we've given them that kind of direction.
Commissioner Maddox and commissioners, we have a long agenda, just want to remind us.
You guys will just settle in, because we're going to be here.
We'll settle in, that's for sure. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, and I know you always make independent decisions. I guess what you're hearing from me is frustration from the earlier battles. So, now, mind you, prior to the audit, what we have back with this RFP is $115,000 in brokerage fees from Priya, $125,000 in brokerage fees from Gallagher, versus $284,080 from J. Smith Lanier from the last year, which is what we were paying. And we've been paying to the same firm in one iteration or another over the past 20-plus years, and the staff recommendation was to continue doing that. So if it weren't for commission action, blood-on-the-floor commission action, we'd still be paying the higher premium amount, which makes me pay more attention to things when they come here and use my best judgment.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Attorney?
Let me add one point, and that is to the appeal process. This is the second occasion, the asphalt decision being the other occasion, when a lot of issues got presented to you that never got vetted in the appeal process, where the city attorney's office takes an independent look at what went on, and the parties that lost, as well as the parties that won, are able to come and lay everything out in front of the city attorney or his designated. So there may be occasions where, after an appeal process, new things come to light, but I don't think in this situation that any of these issues, just like in the asphalt situation, could not have been raised on appeal. And the only reason I raise that, I think the folks in procurement, they routinely rely upon the appeal process to correct some of these problems. And certainly, historically, city attorney's office has not rubber stamped these, and in many occasions, has sent them back to rebid. So in the process of thinking about dealing with these things, think about the role of what your appeal process ought to be, and if you don't use it and don't raise it, should you automatically not be totally precluded, but at a minimum, that be a major issue when it comes to you?
Just, I'm sorry briefly, I need to ask this. Mr. Attorney, outside the four corners of the RFP, outside of something being responsive or unresponsive, how would the appeal process help in a purely subjective ranking?
In purely subjective, it would not, okay?
Which, I contend, where we are today, so therefore, the only appeal process is the final decision-making process that, under our charter, is vested with the mayor and the four city commissioners, correct?
And I have no, no problem with that at all, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
I think we're...
Yes.
One question Commissioner Richardson raised, and I don't have the answer to that, and that is the ability or difficulty in placing the coverage by our May 1 date if we, if we take this to a February 25 meeting, and I don't know if you want to hear from anyone, or you just want us to come back and we'll...
I think the other, the fallback that we have, treasurer, is that we have a retreat next week. And I assume if you hear that we can't do it, we can publicly notice and take this up as an action at the retreat.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Miller?
Mayor, could we possibly do 904, which I pulled before we...
Yes, it's the next item, so great to you, and I'm going to pass the gavel for a moment to Commissioner Maddox. We are on the pulled item 9.04. Commissioner Miller?
Right. This is the item that approves the Phase 2 of Southwood Unit 32. And first of all, I wanted to say, just to make sure everybody's not going to be on the edge of their seats, and I know some of you might be, I'm voting for this, but what this is, and I believe that's the CDD's position also, they've recommended that we support this particular item. The reason that I pulled it, though, is that I feel that we need, there's room for discussion here. One of the CDD, there is a CDD here, which means there's yet another government level out at Southwood. And I think that in talking to growth management, we need to get together and figure out exactly what's off track with the implementation of the PUD. I don't really understand why I get, I mean, I understand, but we have this particular handout that was provided to us, and then we have these pictures that says, this is Southwood and this is not Southwood, and clearly, it's very, very different. And I think we all agree pretty much that this development was planned to be very, very walkable. The main issue that I have with the development is that it's only 60% developed. 40% of that is still there. And how are we going to go forward? How are we going to meet, keep the promises, as they say here, to produce a neighborhood that is very different from other parts of our community? And where are we going to be able to accommodate the people who actually build houses and build them in a way that's affordable to them and still achieve the vision? So with that said, I wanted to suggest that we actually convene a meeting of one of the representative from the developer. Now, this is not, this doesn't have anything to do with anything you all are doing now. I just would like a focus group, essentially, of growth management, somebody from the CDD, Ms. Bibler, who designs everything in Southwood, and seems to have a great deal of knowledge about it, and one of the builders who's building now, because there's a gold mine of land out there. It's an opportunity for the developers and the builders in our community, and I don't want to slow that down in any way, shape, or form. But yet, I do have, I have been following this since the mid-'90s, as I've watched this as a planner, and someone interested in developing walkable neighborhoods that have a sense of community. I really feel that it's gone extremely well until now, and I would like to see it go that way in the future, and I'll yield the...
Commissioner Ziffer?
And many of you already know this. My wife and I were the first people to close on a piece of property in Southwood. I worked for St. Joe for, I think I was hired in 1998, and worked for them for probably around 10 years, eight to 10 years. I have a great deal of knowledge of this development. I was on the community development district. It seems to me there's another player in this also, and it has the homeowners association, the HOA, because they have architectural review control. St. Joe's a big part of this, you guys are part of this. Commissioner Miller, whether, if you want to do this, that's fine, but...
Be my guest.
If there's no objection, I would like to take part in this conversation, because I probably have a lot of the knowledge that goes even before you, Carolyn, because having worked for the developer and what the original intention was, and I understand the whole thing. I will say this, though. There is a real opportunity here to continue to make things right, because I think, Tom, I know that you, several months ago, presented to me something that I reacted the same way as y'all did, and that was, wait a minute, this doesn't look right. And you changed it, and they improved it considerably, and I'm seeing, this is one of those things we did, I think, two years ago, everybody's heads were nodding. So I think there's a real opportunity to make this right. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to take part in convening this group, because I think it can happen. Everybody wants the same thing, and we'll make that happen.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
Just so I can get some of my concerns on the record, and then hand it off to you. Ms. Bibler said, the goals of the PUD are not incorporated into the development standards. That's something that I think summarizes the project, the problem, because I've had our growth management directors telling me basically the same thing, that there's a disconnect somehow, and I'm asking you to fix that for us, please. The other thing that I want to get some clarification on is exactly how much control, architectural control, design control, do the CDD and the homeowners association have? And if that is the case, then we need to step up and do our part as the CDD and the homeowners association, because it can't be left entirely up to the staff. I think that in the overall vision, that player was thought to be involved, maybe to more of a degree than they are at this moment. So I certainly don't want to see you all have to continue to implement your PUD as citizens, and so I respect that request. We're going to try to work this out. I heard that the direction, that the staff was the first, our staff is the first line of enforcement, and I don't believe that's actually the case. So everyone has to jump in. I think there's an opportunity here for anybody who wants to build in Southwood, because I think you're building a community that people absolutely love, they go down there, want to live there, and it's a real saleable concept. So with that, I'll hand it off to you. I would like to move the item, and...
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Commissioner Richardson followed by Commissioner Maddox?
I was about to call you Yellow Man. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we need name tags?
Nope, I got it. It's just one of those days. I got it right, though.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, but I also want to commend Tom and Steve for their willingness to work with the homeowners association and the PUD and CDD. I mean, there are some instances where the developer won't even talk to those entities, and so I do want to commend them and to endorse you all's efforts, because I think, I mean, my daughter attends Florida High, and we're out in Southwood all the time for activities and events and visiting friends, and it is a special community. My wife has tried to encourage us to move out there, but I've resisted, but who knows? I know. And so I, and being a homeowners association president and advocate, I understand, you know, neighborhood associations, homeowners associations, wanting to maintain their special character, and that's what these folk are trying to do. But at the same time, I want to commend Steve and Tom for their efforts to work with those entities in the current phase, and I'm sure that going forward, Commissioner Ziffer, with your leadership, we can come to an agreeable solution from all parties, even future developers, because Steve and Tom may not be the last if there is still a good percentage of the development to be built.
St. Joe needs to be at the table, too.
Commissioner Maddox?
Just, our action today does not preclude the committee's work, correct?
I'm assuming it includes the work, you working with the committee?
Not on phase two.
No, 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 no. Go ahead, clarify.
For the contentious part, that we heard the testimony with earlier, our action by approving this does not preclude working on those issues.
No, 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 I think this has to do with just in the future, to make sure there's a dialogue set up, so there's some degree of understanding that both parties, or in this case, several different parties, are at the table working through the issues so that they don't have to come back here every time a plot gets approved.
Got it. There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Next item pulled was the item 9.07. I initiated the pulling of that item. Treasurer clerk, I wanted you to, there was much talked about, much written about, not much written about, but certainly written about, wherein many of us received calls, folks wondering why we omitted a part of the process in determining the ranking for the recommended firm. And so I want to, I want to offer you the opportunity to explain that a little bit for our understanding, and then I've got a follow-up question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this proposal process, as with all of our procurements, we had a scoring system with points assigned to various categories. The scoring included a number of categories that would be included in the proposal. Separately, fees are evaluated as also part of the city's citywide procurement process. And there also was a component where points were assigned for oral presentations. In the evaluation of the proposals, there were six viable responses received, actually all, a total of six, and all six of which were viable and responsive. The evaluation committee reviewed those, scored them. At the conclusion of that scoring, the top-ranked firm had a sufficient gap between its point total and the second-ranked firm of more than 10 points, which meant that holding oral interviews, which were assigned 10 points, could not make a difference in the outcome. Therefore, scheduling and conducting interviews would have required respondents to our RFP to come make a presentation, spend their time and resources, have points assigned that would in no way be able to change the outcome... that would in no way be able to change the outcome. Therefore, we felt, and I would think the respondents would feel, that using time and resources on something that would not make the difference in whether they get the business or not was, would be unproductive.
And after the oral presentation, or once that oral presentation has been had, can members of the selection committee change their ranking in any of the other categories of which there is a measure? Could someone come wow us at the presentation, maybe clarify something that took place, and their submittal clarified it, and therefore, we have a different understanding? Could we then go back and make adjustments based off clarifications or other understandings? Or the, frankly, the impressiveness of the presentation?
In this case, that would not be something that we would do or could do under our procurement process. Those oral presentations are assigned specific points, so if someone had wowed us in a presentation, they would get the full 10 points. Had they done a terrible job, they would have gotten some much smaller numbers, zero, one, two, three, four, five, depending on what the conclusion was based on the presentation, so that the points from the presentation are based on the points allocated to that category, and it's not a re-opener to reevaluate all of the points. I did check that with our procurement staff and confirmed that that's consistently the way the city...
So again, if there were questions on qualification or demonstrated ability which may show up in a presentation, I could not go back and change a score in any of those categories after the presentation?
That's correct.
Got it. And then one other question, and maybe, I know this isn't your office that actually assigns this, but if there is anybody here who represents the MBE office or could speak to that, I just have a question about...
Michael Parker is here.
I'm sorry?
Michael Parker.
Oh, Michael, good. And Michael, as you come out, just ask my question for the sake of time. My understanding on MBE, at least the way I've understood it up to this point, is you either meet the MBE qualifications or you don't meet the MBE qualifications. But here, my assumption is if you don't meet it, you get zero points. If you meet it, you get all 10 points. What do you have to do to get five points, which is, a number of the firms got half of the total available?
And I don't have that case in front of me, but typically, if you get less than that, that means that you've taken some steps, presented a plan or something like that in the application about how you would address it, but you don't necessarily meet the MBE criteria yourself, like internships or using subcontractors. Now, that's the typical. Now, I have to tell you, I don't have that particular RFP in front of me to know that was the case.
But the way you understand it, you either get no points if you don't meet it, or you get all the points if you meet it?
If you qualify, if you meet the MBE qualifications in the sense that you're providing whatever that, and this was an RFP, so it differs a little bit from a purchase of services or contract, then you get those points. However, there are, you may not be an MBE, but you can make, there are ways you can get points by making commitments as part of your proposal, that you will do internships or journeyman programs or joint ventures, and there are ways which you can receive some of the MBE credits without necessarily being an MBE, meaning qualifying yourself as an MBE. And that's what I'm assuming is what may have taken place here.
Got it.
Okay.
And at some point, if you can just, I do think, as part of an overall conversation on these, since we're putting a lot more focus on these score sheets, just understanding a little bit better, again, there's a percentage, you know, within a deal that is MBE, if you meet it, not all the way clear why you wouldn't get all the points and why that would be parceled.
If there were points assigned to it, and it did come to our MBE staff, and so they did review it, I'm just not familiar with that.
I understand, oh, I believe you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Someone just handed me a page from the RFP where we said that a total of 10 points may be awarded for MBE participation, five points for the MBE plan, and five points for utilizing a certified MBE company. So very consistent with Mr. Parker's comments, the RFP provided an opportunity for the MBE office to evaluate it, and it also states that failure to submit a plan will result in not receiving five points toward the evaluation score. So as this was laid out, respondents had an opportunity to not do anything that would meet the MBE requirements, which would get them zero, provide a plan that would get them five, and to get the full 10 would need to utilize a certified MBE contractor.
Got it. So it's not enough to say, "I'll use a certified MBE and get all 10." There has to be a company plan...
Correct.
...in order to get all 10. Got it. And then the last point for me, and I think this goes to, again, and I don't mean to question anybody's integrity here at all, but in the area where you're looking at qualifications or references, to see that the firm that we have used for the last, I don't know, 12 years, maybe longer?
Longer, but about 11 or 12 since our last...
About 12 years, would not get the full show of support from us on references? Or we would question or rank them less than the competitor with regard to demonstrated ability? You know, those are just areas, again, to me, it seems, if we've been engaged with them that long, and frankly, didn't even bother to go out for an RFP in that period of time, meaning, I'm assuming that we were satisfied with the service, it doesn't all the way gel for me why it is that they would not have probably been the bigger takers in that category.
A couple of things there. Toward the references component, that is exactly that. That is, we asked people to provide references, and we followed up with questions to some of those references. So that was not an evaluation based on our experience, that was contacting other people that the vendors provided as references, and so based on the responses that we received when those folks were contacted, people got a score. I think everyone had a four or five on the references.
There was one with a three.
The one that had a three did not provide references. We found some, but they were not provided in the proposal, so they were scored down there. In terms of demonstrated ability, I think that's an example where our effort on this process and others is to provide an independent evaluation of what we have, and so demonstrated ability is more than what someone may have done with us currently or previously. It's based on the proposal provided. So we provide a detailed request, ask vendors to respond to that, and answer everything we've asked, and so the evaluation is based on what they've provided there. If it were simply a matter of whether someone had provided good service to us, I think, to your point, we wouldn't have to do an RFP unless we were unhappy with somebody, but our effort here is to see if we can ascertain that they have ability to perform these services and have demonstrated it in any number of places, either similar plans in this case or similar entities, so that we're trying to look at the responses and evaluate them based on the proposals provided, so that everyone's given an opportunity to provide their best shot.
Any other questions, or is there a motion?
When are we going to eat dinner?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
I'm asking, I can't make one.
Oh, I was making the motion to eat dinner.
Well, we have this item...
Yes, we do.
...here that I'd love to dispose of. Commissioner Maddox.
Did you want this to come back, or are you comfortable with your questions?
No, 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 I'm fine with the answers that are provided. I think it was important for them to get an airing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve on item 9.07. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we, I would say we could take a break, but we're at 6 o'clock.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
If you would address.
Please.
Earlier, we heard from members from the public under, for items that were on the agenda.
Right.
But we heard from one individual who spoke to an item that was not agendaed.
Right.
Well, there were others here that wanted to speak on that item, but I had informed them that they wouldn't be able to speak until persons to be heard at the end of the agenda.
And you're correct.
Because it wasn't agended. So my procedural question is, given that we allowed an individual to speak in favor of the Livo Plantation Road issue under the items that, on an item that wasn't agended, can we now hear from those two or three people that are here to speak in opposition to that item?
So I'm willing to follow the will of the commission. I would say, though, your advice to them was the right advice, which was, the unagended portion is when we take speakers. The treasurer mistakenly brought one up before, but I think...
The item identified long-range target, which is something that is on our agenda...
Right.
But not realizing that the sidewalks were not part of that.
Right. It was misclassified on the form, so I'm not sure that we would be doing harm by taking it up in its proper place, but anyone else have thoughts on, how many speakers are there on that item?
Maybe two or three.
How many speakers on the Livo Plantation item?
Yes, the clerk or clerk.
There's one?
One, two...
Two, three, okay. Lots.
Four, five, six.
There's six.
Okay, there's six, Commissioner. So my inclination is going to be to leave that on the agenda where it is. I appreciate you raising it. Commissioners, we are at 6 o'clock, which means we are required to go on to hold our current business and go on to public hearings. Treasurer Clerk, are there any listed speakers on any of the public hearing items? Any requested speakers on any of them?
I see none. I'm making sure that no one failed to identify an item properly, but I see none.
There are no speakers listed, Commissioners, on any of the public hearing items. Mr. Attorney, if there are no questions by the Commissioners on any of the items that are up for first and only, could we take a wholesale motion, or do we need to take them individually?
Since most of these items do involve ordinance changes, aside from the opportunity for a public hearing, there is a need to individually read the title of it.
Okay, all right, we'll take them one by one. Is there a motion on 11.01? This is the Florida NM University Master, I'm sorry, 15.01, Bmu Master Plan?
Motion.
Second.
So motion and a second, all those, I'm sorry. Mr. Attorney, do you need to read anything in the record on that?
No.
That was none.
Okay. Motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
I move approval for the staff recommendation for the second final public hearing on ordinance number 14046AA, a proposed revisions to the land development code to allow drive-through uses in specified areas and add design standards for drive-through facilities through the multimodal transportation district.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on 15.02. I won't restate it. I believe Commissioner Maddox stated that because that's part of what you would need to do.
Correct.
And we've satisfied the requirement.
Correct.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Mayor, I've got a comment on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make absolutely sure from our staff that they feel that they have enough information from us to actually determine when, how, what they are doing whenever they come. Where's our staff on this? Staff, 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 staff. Cherie, yes. Make sure that you have everything that you need to know, everything you need to do. Do you need anything else from us in order to make it possible for you to go forward and implement this particular thing? The drive-through designs? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Commissioners, we did hear a number of speakers on item 15.03, and we just want to say to those who came out to express your opinion, I think the majority of us, if not all of us, agree to the concerns that have been laid out, and really appreciate you all taking the time to present that material. Is there a motion on 15.0...
Mr. Mayor, I move 15.04 first and put only public hearing on ordinance number 15-0-0-06, revising the city sign code related to off-site advertising and star metro infrastructure.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on 15.03. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. 15.04?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the, on 15...
One second, Commissioner, I'm sorry. On 15.03?
15.04 is a resolution we're approving. I need to inform the commission that we are amending that resolution to add the following language on page four of the attachment, item subsection E. To add the additional language, it says, "The reimbursement of the payment of TPI as set forth herein is not contingent upon receipt of utility easements by the city from other adjacent property owners. It doesn't change otherwise any aspect of the resolution."
Thank you, City Attorney. Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the first and only public hearing on resolution 15-R-02, proposed abandonment of Goodbody Lane located between Appalachia Parkway and Lafayette Street with the amended language as expressed by the City Attorney.
The motion and a second on 15.02 with the amended language. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
That was 1504.
1504, correct.
Yes, sir.
On 1505, City Attorney, anything you need to add before I entertain a motion?
No, not as long as we talk, read the title.
Right. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move approval of first and only public hearing on ordinance 15Z01, proposed amendment to the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from residential preservation to zoning district to the Kings Mill Plan Unit Development Zoning District.
Second.
So motion and a second on 15.05. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. City Attorney, anything before I entertain?
No additions to 1506.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt ordinance 15Z03, therefore amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from residential, I can't talk, residential preservation one, RP1, zoning district to the Shabat at FSU Planned Unit Development Zoning District. Based on the findings and conditions of the planning commission, the information contained in this report and evidence presented at the hearing there hereon.
There's a motion and a second, and to the treasurer, was there any speaker on the Shabat House item? I ran into someone in the outside. Was there, who was here for that? Was there, was there, did you need to speak?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, great.
I have no speaker forms.
Got it. There's a motion and a second to approve 15.06 as read by Commissioner Miller. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now back up at...
Introduction of ordinances.
Introduction of...
I would like to move, can we, is this the appropriate time to move that we adjourn, or do we need to do something else right now?
We can...
I thought you wanted to go ahead and...
We also have people here waiting on...
Two issues.
What were the two?
One was the sign ordinance issue.
Which I think we took care of. We took care of sign ordinance for those who were here, and I think the only other one is ban the box. We've got a number of folks who are still here on that. Commissioners, can we take that item up?
Sure.
And then we will break briefly for a commission break. Madam Manager, I'll defer to you for the introduction of the item.
Commissioners, at our last meeting, the issue of ban the box for the City of Tallahassee was discussed, and per your direction, additional information was requested related to how other cities have implemented a ban the box initiative, as well as information regarding re-entry programs. You also asked questions related to whether or not the liability of the city would be impacted by implementing a ban the box initiative, and what we've tried to do in this agenda item is present to you answers to the questions that you've raised on this. Ellen Blair, where is Ellen? Ellen is here. If you would like to have, I know you've probably paid very close attention to this, so if you'd like to have a presentation just on the new information that has been presented in response to your questions, we can do that at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ellen?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gillum, Commissioners and Madam Manager. Ellen Blair, Human Resources. Last meeting on the 14th, you requested additional items, and those was responded to you in the agenda item that you see before you. The first was a report from the National Employment Law Project. This provided updated information on state and local legislation affecting public and private entities across the country. The second was a memo summarizing this report, including additional research on Florida communities which have adopted the box, the ban the box policy, or are considering such a policy. The third was, as requested, was general information on re-entry programs, as well as programs supported by the City of Tallahassee. Within that included some hiring statistics covering calendar year 2014 for the City of Tallahassee hiring practices. Lastly, I just wanted to reiterate again that if this policy change goes into effect, we do background checks on all employees regardless of, regardless of where they are, all employees, including law enforcement. This simply changes the sequence of when we ask or when we look into the background of an individual, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Commissioner Miller?
I'd like two things. First of all, I'd like for the attorney to, for you, Ms. Blair, and the attorney, to describe to us the process that we have in place... to us the process that we have in place right now when we go into hiring somebody.
All applicants, well, most applicants apply through our online screening program. So it's an online electronic system where they apply for a particular job. Those applicants are then screened for eligibility. An eligibility list, um, goes out to the departments. The departments will then determine who is interviewed and who is not. They then will pick their final candidate and make a job offer, and at that point, we do a background screening, uh, prior to their start of employment.
That's what we do now?
Yes.
So we don't interview all the applicant, I mean, we don't do, we don't, we don't do background checks on all applicants, we just do background checks on all finalists for jobs?
That's correct.
Now, when you mean, when you say finalists for jobs, do you mean the last, the five finalists, the, um, last finalist, I mean?
Typically, it's the final candidate. You decide who your person is that you want to offer the job to, and we will do a background screening prior to them being offered formally that job offer and starting work. So usually, it's just one, there are occasions where we'll do several.
All right, and then you hand that job off to the attorney's office?
Depending on when the criminal background check shows a hit, uh, the HR department will consult with the city attorney's office as well as the department manager and make sure that whatever that criminal history is, is appropriate to continue with the placement of that person in the position.
And could I have asked the attorney to elaborate?
Anytime that there turns out to be a criminal history, there's a specific check-off for evaluation of that criminal history as to whether or not, given our criteria, which are matched up with the requirement of both, uh, state law and federal court decision, we, we look at the, uh, we review the criminal history. Uh, I personally, since 2001, when we initiated this, have reviewed 95% of all of those myself, only in the case when I have been absent or on vacation, have not done that. Uh, so there's, has been some consistency within our office review of it, and we make a determination whether or not the criminal history, uh, should preclude the offer of employment. And I think, uh, Ms. Blair has provided you the information that there are many occasions, uh, I forget the percentage that was cited, where the fact of a criminal history did not at all prevent the person from, um, being offered the job.
Right. All right, and what you've got here in, um, thank you.
Now, there is, there is obviously, um, a concern that, uh, expressed at previous meeting by one or more of you, that there needs to be a, uh, second, uh, alternative to a criminal history because it is certainly possible that a criminal history might be in wrong or not pick anything up. So it's not inconsistent with the process that Ms. Blair is outlining to still ask for self-disclosure, uh, in addition to the back, background check for the finalists that we're actually interviewing.
So when our staff is interviewing people, they really, um, it's never come up really to that point in their, uh, to their attention one way or the other. It's, is that correct?
The past has.
Where does it, does this topic come up in that hiring process?
Currently, they check off the box that indicates if they have a criminal conviction history.
So they know going into the interview that that's the case?
When they go online to fill out the application, the box is there currently. So they check the box, so the manager does see it and has an opportunity to ask questions about that criminal conviction.
Do you anticipate that by taking this off, that, that staff is going to be in any way, and I guess this is really a question for the manager, what I'm really trying to get at here is exactly what's going to change? What is going to change in this process?
What will change, actually, is just that the box will be removed, and we will still do a criminal history check, and if we find something that concerns us in the criminal history check, we will speak with the applicant, give that person a chance to explain the issue if indeed they are a top applicant, and, uh, follow up and make a decision based on that.
Can't you ask during the process?
Yes, we, and typically for, especially for the higher level positions, we always ask the question if there's anything in your history that we need to know that isn't on your application.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Ziffer?
A question for Ellen. In the, in the process currently, where the boxes, and I'm sorry, I've not seen one of our applications, if they check the box, is there an opportunity for any kind of an explanation as to what that was?
There is. They're asked if they have, uh, criminal conviction history of felonies and first-degree misdemeanors, and then there's a portion, um, that they can either attach a narrative sort of explaining what the situation was.
So at that moment, on our side, the city side, um, we have the opportunity to be able to see?
Yes.
If it's an appropriate position for them to be hiring for?
Yes.
Okay, so do we ever, just curious, let's say we get an applicant who has a felony record, and they check the box, and, um, let's say the job is for meter reading, and they happen to have been convicted, let's say, of, um, home invasion, probably not inappropriate, but we probably have other places in our city government that might work for them if they're a good applicant. Do we ever try to place people doing what we're trying to do here, which is help people get employment?
In the very low percentage where someone is actually denied employment based on their criminal conviction history, uh, we would tell that individual, and based on the circumstances, we would certainly, um, you know, tell them that they're welcome to apply for other positions through our online system.
Okay, so you just said, very infrequently, do we deny?
That's correct.
People as a result of them checking the box?
That's correct.
And based upon the data that you presented, clearly that confirms it. Um, what was it, 11% of our applicants checked the box?
11% of those screened?
Yes.
For background checks in 2014 were offered the positions.
Okay.
So total, um, if I misstated that, I'm, I'm sorry, but out of the applications that were screened in 2014?
Yes.
There was 15% who showed a criminal conviction history.
Correct.
Out of that, 11% were ultimately hired and 4% were denied employment.
Okay, so 11?
11 out of 15.
No, 11 out of 100, not at 11 out of...
Right. 11% total.
Okay, but, but we as a city, we already look past the box, is that correct?
That's correct.
15 had records and 11 were hired. 15% of the total.
Commissioner, uh, Richardson, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Blair, do, for sensitive positions, would this apply, for instance, our Parks and Recreation Program, uh, the Senior Citizen Program, if someone were applying for a position in the, uh, Treasurer Clerk's Office? Sensitive positions like that in particular, would, would this apply or?
The same, the same policy applies excluding public safety positions, but the same policy applies to everyone. It's, um, for certain positions that work, especially with vulnerable populations, there is an extra degree of background that we do do. And so there's an extra scrutiny that goes for that.
Okay, and, and then the other question is, in the information that you gave us, background information, there, 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 if I recall correctly, about 21 other cities that have, that have implemented this, was it 21 or?
70, 70 cities.
70? Okay, I don't know where I got 21 from. Um, do, do you have any idea or have you talked to any of those municipalities to find out how their policy is working, if they've had any adverse issues, uh, if it's been more positive?
We conducted, um, an additional study since the last time we met for Florida communities, and I'm not aware that there was any significant problems.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had questions on this before, and I'll just outline, I, I'm good for Ms. Blair, but I mean, I just outline my concerns with it, and, uh, I, I disagree with my good friend, President Landry, in, in just the effectiveness of this, and I believe in what you do, and I'm a life member of the NAACP, uh, and I think you do a good job personally. My problem with this is I don't think it's effective, and I think it's unfair to the applicant. So right now, under Green v. Missouri, which was a Eighth Circuit Court case, it set out what could be asked and what disqualifiers are for, uh, denying someone employment for a felony record. And that is also in Florida statutes 435, and the exceptions from that, 435.07, and is also in our city policies. So the application that we have today has a box that you, uh, you checked, have you ever been convicted of a felony or first-degree misdemeanor? Have you ever had the adjudication of guilt withheld for a felony or first-degree misdemeanor? Says right here, "The nature, job relatedness, severity, and date of the offense in relation to the duties of the position for which you are applying are considered." Those are the only things that can be used under federal law to disqualify somebody with a felony record for employment. In fact, in the city, we had in 2014, we hired 89 people who checked yes to the box. So my, my question is, if there's discrimi, I believe in redemption, and I would venture to say I'm the only one on this board that has hired a city employee with a felony record.
Not true.
Have you? Okay, so you and I have hired a, a city employee with a felony record, so I have not, I'm not just talking the talk, I've walked the walk. Uh, I believe in redemption, and I believe in second chances, uh, and, and I believe that people have things to offer after they've paid their debts to society. My concern is, so we don't ask someone upfront, they apply, and we find that they're denied based on the nature, job relatedness, severity, and date of the offense after they have gone through the, the process. I would rather they be told that upfront, then I think it's fairer to them. And then, if they're disqualified, if we are disqualifying outside of these three areas, then we have discrimination problem, then we have discrimination problem. And, and it is incumbent upon us and our manager and our city attorney to ensure that that does not happen because we've run afoul of our own policies, we've run afoul of state law, and we've run afoul of federal law, uh, and, and we shouldn't stand for it. But I think it's unfair to the applicant to allow them to get to that far in the process if those three are disqualifying. I would completely go, I, I, so I think the application should say, have those three things in it, that you can be disqualified for the nature, the job relatedness, severity, and, and date of the offense in relation to the duties of the position. I think that's fair to let people know upfront. I would also be in favor of removing, uh, adjudication of guilt withheld for felony or first-degree misdemeanor, which I don't think is required by law. That's my opinion on it.
I have, uh, you want to?
I just want to expand on that, because, um, similar to Commissioner Maddox, um, and I think it's probably, hopefully, it would be made abundantly clear, no matter what happens with this vote, that when it comes to hiring at the city of Tallahassee, not only do we need to look beyond the box, if the box stays or if the box goes, that we do really want to give people a second chance. Um, and those that qualify and are capable, and whatever conviction they have doesn't prevent them from serving whatever that job position is, we want to hire them. We want to give them a second chance. And so similar to what Commissioner Maddox is saying, and I know this sounds contrary, but by looking at that box and by getting that explanation, I hope that our people that are making these hires, will in some cases, I hate to, you know, I don't know how else to put it, but bonus those people that clearly they want to get a second chance. And a lot of them will have demonstrated through a year or a month or 10 years or 20 years that they have made a change in their life, because all of us, at one time or another, probably have done something in our lives that could have been, we've been found guilty of, we just weren't in the wrong place at the wrong time. I mean, I...
Sure.
You know, I, I'm, I understand that. So, um, I'm going to be voting against this, but I want to pass on, and I think we've done this with the city manager, and I know the mayor clearly wants to do this, is that when it comes to the city of Tallahassee, if you have a criminal record, you know, come to us, because we're going to look past that, we are, because we want to help people out.
So I want to, uh, thank you, Commissioner, and I just wanted to weigh in on this conversation. Uh, one, I really appreciate how thoughtful folks have been around asking, uh, this question. Uh, I think I assumed it would be simpler, frankly, because we're not breaking new ground, we're kind of following a pack, uh, that has already taken off in a lot of other places. Um, I, I think it is really important to make abundantly clear, uh, that background checks will still be conducted, absolutely. Um, and, uh, the question and the ability to have a conversation about a person's criminal background history when they, um, uh, make it through the initial screening can still be had, and I'm, and I'm willing to bet will be had, but it's, it's a very big difference than me writing a couple of sentences on an application and checking a box, and me having a conversation with a person who's interviewing me, and I get to say, "Yes, Ms. Fabius Thompson, I did make a mistake five years ago, uh, but I have a reason to live and I've got a family to take care of, and if given this chance, I promise not to let you down." And you can eyeball me and get a sense of whether or not I'm somebody you're willing and, uh, ready to take a, to take a risk on. Um, I wish, uh, things were as rosy as, uh, as we have heard them discussed, uh, by, by some of us up here. Uh, I, I think 89 is, 89 individuals is, is, is better than none out of our 3,000-person workforce over whatever period of time. That 89 doesn't take into consideration the throngs of folks who don't apply because they are concerned about the implications of their history. So I actually think it very much so matters what statement we send to the public, um, in this regard. The other thing is, uh, that the evaluative criteria, what you write on the, uh, application once you get beyond the person's relevant job experience for the position they're applying for, is very much so subjective. Um, and that's just the nature of a hiring process, it is subjective, and the data shows us, as it was indicated in this item, that when asked, uh, by business owners, 40 to 50% of them say that they would not consider somebody with a criminal background history. That's what they say, that's what people are willing to say about it, that's just those who are willing to admit. Think about those who are not willing to admit that that is a, a, a factor. The other piece is that if this was not such an issue, then why is it that about 75% of former felons are unemployed? That is astounding. And so the idea that the practice is, uh, uh, any more rosy than what the reality suggests, you can't disconnect the two. Um, the practice means, the practice is yielding, uh, hugely detrimental outcomes for people who are applying for jobs, that's just the reality. These folks aren't making those stories up. Um, I'm, I'm not suggesting in any way that they are, are lying or being dishonest, to the point of what federal law, um, says and what the state statute says. We know what the law says in a lot of instances and, and then what actually ends up happening. In fact, the law says that you cannot discriminate with regard to pay between genders, men and women, yet there is a gender pay gap that exists in this country, in this community, and everywhere in the United States, and therefore you have members of Congress who are pushing for equal pay for equal work, not only in Washington DC but also here in Tallahassee. But the law, federally, state and otherwise, says you cannot discriminate on that basis. To make the moment relevant to now, we are commemorating the 50th anniversary of Selma and the approval, uh, congressional approval of the Voting Rights Act, which is interesting because black people in this country had the right to vote for almost 100 years before the Voting Rights Act was passed. Yet, at the time when the Voting Rights Act was voted upon, less than 20% of black people in this country registered to vote. I'm not suggesting that the other 80% didn't desire the right to vote, they desired the right to vote, but there were conditions that were put in place that made that difficult. There was the law, and then there was the practice. And the numbers, the data is showing us that there is the law, and then there is the practice. And so I don't think we should be Pollyannaish about this, and we cannot ignore what the data is saying, and what people who are experiencing this every single day are saying about this. I'm actually very shocked at the kind of response from certain quadrants of this community because we're actually not changing the process one iota except to move the sequence of when the question about criminal background history is asked. It still gets asked, a background check still gets done, and if my colleagues are sincere in their, their, their statements around recidivism and being willing and open to take people on their second chances, then what is the problem with moving forward? If all of the felt safe conditions are still in place, there is no legitimate argument as to why anybody could be against this on the merits of what I've heard tonight. It just says that we're willing to give people, uh, uh, a shot to get in the door, the hope that a person who comes out of this system might be able to come to the city of Tallahassee, apply for a job, and feel that they may get a fair shake. That's it, that is it. We still do the background check, we still... We still have the conversation and ask the question. None of that is being thrown away, foregone. We're not throwing into jeopardy the safety and security of our seniors or our students. We're not subjecting this government to be run by ex-convicts necessarily. We're just saying that people deserve a second chance. That's it. And that they ought to be able to get their foot through at least the first hurdle. And if we're not concerned, if we believe that people are willing to give folks the benefit of the doubt in this government, and that box is not an exclusion, then let's give it a real shake. Let's see whether the application pool changes. Let's see whether or not we end up with a more diversified workforce that actually demonstrates opportunity for people. That'll show up in the numbers. And the cities and the mayors that I've spoken to on this issue, not one of them have expressed that they've had an issue. Not one of them. So, the over-cautiousness on this has to be questioned, and I question it. I think real people with real concerns can obviously come to different conclusions. I completely get that. But the experience, the testimonials we've heard, the data, and the history over the arc, over the arc of our, of our, of our state, our country, the practices in this government demonstrate that that box matters. It matters, whether we want it to or not. It matters. And if we got in place all the fail-safes, all the fail-safes, I can't understand why we wouldn't give this a shot. I really can't. And so, I'll stop. Clearly, I'm, I'm very passionate about this, and I have to tell you, I was talking to RJ, my wife, about it last night. I said, "My biggest fear on this," because the manager can make the movement, and she's already indicated her, her indication to do it, "but I do think it matters that it goes with our support, that it goes with our endorsement." I would love for it to go with our unanimous endorsement, but tonight, we just need three of us to agree to say we're willing to give this, give this a shot. But my biggest fear in talking to her was, what if I have done something really wrong in presenting this? What if we have not teed this up? What if we haven't had the right conversation with the right person? What if somebody's mad at me because it's been written about in the paper, and they think I'm overstepping my bounds? What if I played the politics on this wrong amongst my colleagues, and therefore, there are people who are going to suffer for my mismanagement of it? That I can't have on my conscience, and that hurts. And so, I hope tonight that we'll give our endorsement to the manager. I think it's the right thing to do, and I'll stop there. Commissioner Miller?
Well, you're, I was, I'm interested in your comments, and I want to follow up on the comments about the public conversation that this has generated. It's generated a huge amount of public conversation. What has been missing, though, is that there is a place for folks. There is a place, there are jobs for people where they are a fit, whatever they did. They wrote a bad check 10 years ago. What is missing is the definition of what's a felony and the broad, broad, broad. And I look to Mr. Dobson and say, "Please, help with this. Help people to understand that a felony can be something very, very minor, and it can be something that will relatively, very minor, really. There are a lot of minor things that many of us in the room may have been guilty of at one time or another and just didn't get caught. And then there are major things. There are, there's embezzlement, there's assault, there's murder, there's a lot of stuff. But that's all encompassed in that one term of a felon. And even for the most severe folks, the folks that go and serve their time, when they get out, there may still be a place where they fit because we can't, as a society, economically afford to have the numbers of people unable to get work just because of a mistake in their past, especially a mistake that they made and they have paid for. So, I feel comfortable with what we have in place. I want, I feel comfortable with the situation that we've got with the manager and the HR director and the attorney, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think tonight you have clearly articulated all the reasons why this should move forward, as you did in your op-ed piece. And clearly, I will fully disclose, I responded to that op-ed piece in an email that you sent out to us because I had no idea that this was coming to a vote from the commission. The agenda item says for information only. And so, Mr. Attorney, whatever I have to do to rectify that, if just disclosing that does that, I'm prepared to vote on this tonight because it is the right thing to do. You know, we, we don't know the number of people who have been deterred from even applying because they may be embarrassed to check that box, and then it becomes a public record, and everybody in, in the world sees it. So, and we don't know who those people are. We can't count those people. We can count the ones who did. But, but I think that what the mayor has said, and that's why I asked the questions that I asked, you know, what have, what's happened in, in other municipalities? Have there been problems? Have there been issues? I, I didn't hear that there have. And so, I, I think for us to give this an opportunity to see if it works, as the mayor said, I think all of the fail-safe issues are in place. This simply gives those individuals who may have something in their past, and, and the one, well, two things I want to address because I think that there is a perception that, that this is somehow, that it only impacts African-Americans. This impacts anyone regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, economic background, who has found themselves in that position. And that's certainly not limited to, to any one race or ethnic background or gender. And so, I want, that I want to dispel. Secondly, I, I know that there have been some that have asked the question, "Well, are we going to force this on the private sector?" You know, is, no. This, this is strictly limited to the city of Tallahassee and, and has nothing to do with any other employer unless it's something that they want to try on their own, and they, they have to make that decision. So, I certainly want to clear up those two issues. But I think it's the right thing for us to do. We would be following in the path, as the mayor has said, of 70 other municipalities that have already done this, and there are others that are contemplating it. So, we're not, we're not blazing a trail. We're following that path. And for those reasons, I would support endorsing the city manager going forward and making that change.
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion if you would like to entertain one at this point.
Is that a public, were we supposed to let the public know we were voting on something on this issue?
Is there a notification issue?
It, it's advertised as for information only. So, there's, there was no reason that the public would expect there to be a vote on this particular issue.
Do you, is there a legal issue as to why we could not take an action to endorse, which is an unbinding vote, but is there a legal issue around endorsing the mayor, the manager's decision?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
That leaves it to me.
It was.
I'll second it, but that's not before I make a comment.
Sure, please.
I want to say that there, this is, once you get out of our little neighborhood here in Tallahassee, you'll see, and look at the information, you'll see that this is pretty much a nonpartisan issue. There are 12 states that have made a state, made this motion statewide, and I think that it, I feel the need to bring that to the public's attention because there's such a level of concern out there. I mean, I have retirees who are worried that we're going to be sending felons to their doors. Well, that, I think this conversation, as I mentioned, needs a much broader exposure into the public conversation. But I'm going to read for the record the states statewide where the governors have signed into law this particular, have the ban the box position. California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Illinois, Maryland, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Nebraska, New Jersey, New Mexico, and Rhode Island. And these are all over the country, none in the South. The, the mayor or the governor of Georgia has said that he has intentions to pursue this, but to this date has yet to do it. But I just felt that it was important to bring that to the public conversation. In a sense, this is a cosmetic action, and, and a lot of people have recognized it as an economic reality, an economic reality to integrating talent back into the workforce, and an economic reality to keep people out of prison because if they have no opportunity for job, they are going to end up with no other alternative but to resort to crime to support themselves and their families, and I certainly don't want to be part of that.
There's a motion and a second to endorse the manager's position. Any readiness, Commissioner Maddox?
Just briefly, I, I won't belabor the point, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate your passion. I do, however, object to the statement that any argument against this is not a legitimate argument. I think the greatest diversity of all is diversity of thought, and I think we're all coming from the same place on this commission. We just disagree on how to get there. So, to characterize it as illegitimate, I think is unfair. And Commissioner Richardson, thank you for your comments on race. I've worked very hard on race relations in the city of Tallahassee, very hard for a very long time. I object. I object to the discussion of race tonight in relation to this.
Yes.
Felons are not a protected class, number one. So, someone that has a felony, they're convicted of a crime. They, they're not a protected class. It was not through any, you know, non, non-action of their own. I'm sure in some cases it is, but overall, it's not because of the color of their skin or their gender, their religion, or their creed. And felons come in all shapes and sizes and colors. So, I, I object to race being interjected.
Sure.
I have one last question, and this is going to inform my position on this also. How will this affect the vendors and the contractors that we hire?
Not at all.
All right. Is this going to be written down somewhere in a written protocol?
It will be in an administrative policy, impacting only the city of Tallahassee and its employees.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to endorse the position of the manager as it relates to banning the box on applications. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
There are two opposed, three in favor, and the motion passes. And I think we're going to take a quick 15-minute break. We will reconvene here at 7:00.
I did want to remind you, I think some of you thought you were finished with the SNIPE ordinance, I mean, the SNIPE discussion. We haven't finished that item.
Ah, we did that wrong. Let me, so that we don't have a issue.
And we have people waiting.
Is there any one of, Ashley, can we take the vote? How about that?
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we take item, I'm sorry, the number is 13.01. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve 13 point, accept the report on 13.01. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're in recess until 7:00.
Oh, we do have three. Huh? Yeah, right, exactly. We have three. So we'll call the meeting back to order. And the first item on the agenda is introduction of ordinances 12.01. Cherie, is staff or city attorney?
City attorney.
This is to request introduction of ordinance 15Z-02 is a proposed amendment to the official zoning matter to change the zoning classification from residential preservation one to the school of arts and sciences, plan unit development zoning district. A public hearing, first and only public hearing is set for this on February 25th, 2015. If we could have that shown as introduced.
Show your ordinance introduced. Back to policy formation and direction. Excuse me. We did take care of item 13.01.
Right.
13.02, discussion on approval of city commission policy 802.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Ivan, anything we need to know, and he's not down here. So, oh, there you are. I'm sorry. I couldn't see you, sir. Anything we need to know, sir? Otherwise, we're going to vote.
The answer is not much.
Manager, we're negotiating the contracts right now. We should have that done within the next couple of days. I would say within 60 days from now, we'll start rolling out the amenities. We should have more than 300 installed by the end of the year.
Got it. Great. Thank you. There's a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
And you already approved the associated ordinance with that that was part of the public hearing.
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Manager. 13.04, approval of General Dynamics lease renewal. Mark Bedouin.
I'll move the item.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 13.05, approval to submit 2015 All American City application.
Approval, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion for approval.
I should have let the former mayor do. I'll let you make the motion.
I agree.
I move it, and I'd appreciate Commissioner Richardson seconding it, who traveled with us to Philadelphia and brought home the gold.
You had a great time.
Maddox, I believe it's you were the last time we bought that bag. That was the last two thousand.
99, 2000. I had just graduated from high school. Is there, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 13.05, grant funding for high efficiency upgrades to the HVAC and lighting system.
1305 is all.
I'm sorry, 13.06. My apologies.
Second.
There's a motion to approve 13.06. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously.
We have a target issue update the Commissioner Miller would like to provide.
We do have a target. Was there, I know there are a lot of maybe speakers in the audience. Is this all for unagenda?
All for unagenda, yes, sir.
Got it. Commissioner Miller.
Yes, this was listed before we were here at 8 o'clock. So I'll be, I'll be brief. I'll be brief. But there were some things I wanted just to bring to your attention that are going on, and I thought it was important not to let it language so they can proceed between now and the end of February. First of all, we discussed the French, the Frenchtown marketplace, and I think we'll hear more about this at our CRA meeting tomorrow morning. The CRA is looking to purchase the Billy Owens Building in Frenchtown to support the Frenchtown marketplace. This is going to require a text amendment to our zoning code to allow the marketplace use at that location. The ordinance to amend the CU18 zoning district as recommended by the LRTI, that's long range transportation, long range target issue, will be coming before the city commission in March. We may need some flexibility in the public hearing schedule in order to move this along quickly. Normally, we have public hearings at the last meeting of the month, and what I'd like to ask you all to consider letting staff do is to introduce the ordinance on March 1st, and then hold the two public meetings at the two consecutive meetings after that, mainly because, as you know, we've been talking about this in the CRA for months, and I'd like for us to be able to get this marketplace on the road as soon as possible. Next was chain of parks lighting. We asked, we asked to bring before LRTI the, the idea of leaving the lights on for longer than just the Christmas period in the park. Currently, there's 20, there are 26 large live oak trees that have permanent incandescent lights installed. The, there are three parks, too. The one west of Adams, the one between Adams and Monroe Street, and then the one from Monroe Street East. The existing lights need to be replaced, and the staff is looking into replacing these, they are looking to replace these lights with more efficient LED lighting, and to utilize the lights year round. We also talked about colored lights and other options that will be coming back for discussion. The Ponce de Leon Park, which is between Monroe and Adams, is the priority, and those lights, we hope to have this all in place so that we can leave those lights on during the session if the installation of the new lights is not complete. To still go ahead. This will, we'll have an update at the long range transportation, long range target issue meeting again at the 25th, or is that, I'd have to ask staff if that's going to be brought to you on the 25th, but in any, at any rate, we're going to be discussing this again on the 25th of February. Next was the FAMU, FAMU Way Capital Cascades Trail update. The first phase of this road should be complete by October of 2015. The LRTI recommended taking a comprehensive look at the opportunities to reduce flooding and also to provide retrofit and redevelopment opportunities to the Lake Bradford area and the whole FAMU Way. And this actually ties in with, this is a more comprehensive and thorough planning effort for stormwater management throughout the area, and also tying in this existing blueprint with some of the goals in the blueprint that we just passed for 20, in this past November election. So they want to go in and do real master planning of the basin, and to address all opportunities that are there, and basically support the broader goals of all of those efforts, especially centered around the Lake Bradford Gateway. Next was Breckenridge on Park Neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's located just off Capital Circle. The road turns in, it's on the northwest corner of Capital Circle and Park. There's commercial development all along Capital Circle, and then down the hill from that is this neighborhood. This is permitted and approved by the county in the late 80s. This is before the city had a permitting department or growth management department. Unfortunately, it was not built as it was permitted and designed. The lack of control, of, the lack of that, the discrepancies between what was actually built and what was permitted meant ultimately that the off-site water that flows onto these properties was never really addressed, as it was supposed to have been when the permits were issued. Our stormwater, stormwater can, can retrofit the property to the original design. That'll require putting in an open ditch along the eastern edge of the property. It'll require donation of right of way everywhere that work has to be done, and the homeowners association has been tasked in a partnership with the city, if the city is willing to take this on, has been asked to seek those right of ways from those property owners. The city manager is also speaking with the county on a possible sharing of the cost to get this, this off-site water addressed. The VA Clinic, we had a very quick discussion of the land use, the zoning and comprehensive planned land uses that are applied on the property around the VA Clinic, and the current zoning and comp plans do support the anticipated growth in the area surrounding the clinic. And finally, we talked about tobacco-free hiring. I think you all have remembered that that's been, we brought that up here at the DAS. It was determined by our legal department that tobacco-free hiring is legal, and is present, is being done in a lot of municipalities. We, there will be, we will be seeking direction on what the city commission wants to do, and how, whether you want to do any of the possible ways that we could address this problem. The LRTI recommendations was that new hires would be non-smokers, and also that potentially rearranging premiums, premiums that reduce healthcare premiums, with reduced healthcare premiums for non-smokers. There must be a wellness program connected with this, and we have one, but there are probably some tweaks we would have to do if we chose to go in this direction, and this will be coming to you in the February 25th commission meeting. And I wanted to go ahead and give you, ordinarily, I would give you this report next meeting, and because some of this is coming back to you in the next, the next meeting is February 25th, we won't have that first meeting in February, and I wanted to just make you aware of the fact that this would be coming to you, and that we had talked about these things in long-range planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
I wanted to ask Commissioner Maddox if you wanted to add anything to that.
You did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner, both Commissioners, frankly, for reminding me why I chose to serve on another target issue committee. You, we seem to dump all of the heavy stuff with long-range planning, so we thank you all for your work on that. Any other target issue updates?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just briefly for the airport.
Yes.
Recently, Director Curry and I traveled to Chicago. I would not recommend going to Chicago in January. I commuted to Chicago and back in a 27-hour period, so it was lots of fun, only not. But we met with United Airlines on trying to get them to serve some routes that are not currently being served in Tallahassee. So we, I think we're making some headway and hoping that one of these will end up with a result. We, of course, we got the silver flight to Fort Lauderdale, and we're proud of that, but we continue to strive for more flights and lower fares out of the airport.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Now, I believe we are on unagenda speakers. Treasurer Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have several speakers, the first of which is Paul Henry. As he approaches, I'll remind speakers, as with the earlier portion of our meeting, speakers have three minutes for their remarks. There is a light just to the left of where you stand that will be green and then turn yellow and red, at which point I'll advise you that your three minutes have expired. If speakers will give their name and address for the record, we'll appreciate it. Mr. Henry will be followed by Harry Brown.
Paul Henry, Monticello, Florida. Commissioners and Mayor, I'm here to talk to you about your red light camera in three minutes or less, which is a tough task. I'm retired law enforcement, 25 years in law enforcement. I worked crashes, I worked traffic homicide. I was a supervisor, I was also a criminal and internal affairs investigator. Some things I want to point out to you is that your cameras have lost money since July 2013. You had some information that was given to you at your December 2013 meeting from the city traffic mobility manager. Some of that was incorrect, some of that has been updated, and it has gotten worse instead of better. Your contract has some legal issues that have been brought out in other cases in southeast Florida, that would really invalidate the way that you issue your red light camera tickets because of the vendor. Your yellow signal timing was standardized by DOT rule in 2013. That caused your tickets to drop off by about 50% in July. Of course, when they drop off like that, that's when you start losing money. You made money in fiscal year 2011, you started to lose it in 2012, you lost money in 2013. 2014 year to date, you lost quite a bit. And you've got a contract that says, well, I'm getting in roundabout ways here, I'm asking you not to renew your contract. It's up for renewal this year, 2015. It was a two-year plus three-year extension in 2012. If you happen to pull out of this early, which would actually be the best thing to do financially on the face of it, but if you pull out early, you're subject to extra fees that you already owe. If you let it expire, you don't pay the money, the camera company has to waive it by contract. Finally, there's no safety benefit. I had asked for data from the city, which was a very painstaking process. My public records request was rewritten by somebody in the city. 75% of the information I asked for was deleted with no reason. However, I did get data from the state. Nutshell, you had 24 red light violation crashes before your cameras, three years, what the city traffic mobility manager used. You had 22 after, insignificant difference. The trend is that they are increasing when you look at the 2014 data. Of great importance as well, is that you had no fatalities in those three years prior. Since that time, you've had four. Three within the three-year period, a rear-end crash up here at Monroe in Tennessee, I think most of us are familiar with, another rear-end crash in April of 2014 in Appalachian Capital Circle. Again, I'm asking you, there's no financial or safety benefits, so why are we using the camera program? I would strongly urge you to please keep me informed on this. I'd like to come and speak to you at great length on this, at least 20 minutes if I could. I've got a presentation to give you. And I'd also urge you to not renew the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners.
We met earlier this week, and I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to actually look at the data. It's, it's pretty compelling. And from the start, I was always of the position where as if it was helped from a safety standpoint, I was a firm believer in red light cameras. And this is once again going by the information you provided me, but it, there is a possibility that one of the reasons why red light running has decreased is exactly for what the reason you suggested, which is the yellow light time has been extended, and so people are having more time to get through the light, or they're having more time to stop. And if that's the case, and it's no longer the effect of knowing it's a red light camera there, I have serious concerns as to whether we should continue it because we are losing money. If the yellow light decreases the accidents, I'm all for that. And if we're spending money needlessly, I have an issue. So perhaps we could have an update and further explanation because I think we probably need to take a look at this.
We'd be happy to provide an update.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Harry Brown. He'll be followed by Barbara Withers. Ms. Withers and all remaining speakers, I believe, are on the sidewalks on Live Oak Plantation Road topic.
Good evening, Commissioner. Before I start, could I have my time adjusted 30 seconds for the last commission meeting when I was interrupted by city manager?
Mr. Brown, you've got, you've got three minutes, and we're going to try to, you know, keep you to it.
Okay. All right. I'm Harry Brown. I reside at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee, Florida. At the commission meeting when Mr. Jackson came to present Mayor Marx with a mark check, Maddox, you stated that that was a classless act. Scott, what can be more classless and disrespectful for yourself and others than you engaging in sexual intercourse with your aide in the close proximity of other office workers on top of your desk, no less? What character of a man would engage in such salacious activity?
You know, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, you know, I was hoping a new year would bring a new attitude.
It's not.
I understand, but what I'm going to ask you to try to refrain from doing are making claims that are unjustified, that have not been proven, that are, quite frankly, slanderous. And so if, you, you know, we tolerate your comments, you can obviously make whatever criticisms you want, but if you could please refrain from making slanderous comments about the folks up here and in this community, we'd appreciate it. And as long as you can do that, you completely have your three minutes. I'll ask the treasurer clerk to reset that because I'm interrupting you, but if you continue, I'm going to have to gavel you to an end.
Okay. Well, why am I being cheated this way when others can come here and speak what they want to speak?
Not slanderously, sir, not slanderously.
Okay. Stop me when you get ready.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brown and Mr. Mayor, I paused the time when you began speaking, Mayor, so in a couple of seconds, I'll start the time again, so he's been given the time that you requested.
Appreciate it.
What character of a man would engage in such salacious activity? The secretaries simply got tired of you misusing and abusing your young aide, so they summoned Lily and Dot and came, who came to the office at that particular time to catch you doing what you were doing.
Mr. Brown.
Two custodians. What? Why, what's so bad about?
I just, I just, I'm just asking for you to stick to the facts and not be slanderous, okay?
Let me go to one fact for you. Okay. Now, Nita, you should gird your mind with truth and decency and release Dot from the albatross of lying for you and Scott on a false affidavit to cover his loose.
Mr. Brown, if we could do this, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove the remainder of your time. And what I'm going to ask is, we obviously want you to have every right possible to address the commission, but it may be worth us sitting down with the city attorney.
When you gonna do that?
I'm happy to schedule a meeting.
I've been coming here now for a long time.
I understand.
To let you all know what goes on in this city.
I understand.
With city employees, and you have made no correction. You took me, sent me out of here.
Mr. Brown, we're not going to make progress this way, so this is what I'm going to recommend, and that is, is that we sit down, you and the city attorney, and we can define what are appropriate parameters. I'm not trying to censor you, but we have adopted a policy here with regard to what are appropriate encounters for me to have with you and also for you to have with us. And if we can figure out a way to get within that, you're, you are happy, we're all happy to hear, maybe not, but your three minutes, you certainly have that right.
Okay.
You certainly have that right. So at this time, I'm going to ask you if you would give back the remainder of your time, and in preparation for the next time you choose to appear, between such time, we can get with the city attorney and have a conversation about what's appropriate.
Okay. Can you tell me, are you gonna call me and let me know?
The city attorney will, will call you and we'll get it scheduled.
Right. And how much time are you gonna give me?
Between, well, you'll get three minutes here, but we'll give you as much time as necessary for us to understand each other.
That's what I want the public to hear.
Absolutely. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your cooperation.
And definitely, I'm going to cooperate with you as long as you cooperate with me.
Absolutely.
And since I've been coming here, you have not done that.
Well, I just got the gavel, but I appreciate it. Thanks.
I just had a comment.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. You know, we laughed these comments off because we've heard them about the city manager having sex with the commissioner, and me having sex with this and that, back and forth, and we've heard these at, from Mr. Brown at, at several meetings. And we, you know, we take him on the face of the comments, and we laugh it off considering the source, but I've been doing a lot of thinking about it, and we don't pay enough attention to mental illness in this country. And we have seen two recent results, one at Florida State with Myron May, and the second that resulted in the loss of a life of Chris Smith, a Leon County Sheriff's deputy, because of obvious mental illness that resulted in people being put in danger. So what I would say, Mr. Brown, I, I don't understand what you're going through, but I know you're going through something. We'd like to offer you prayer. If there's help that, that we can give to help you find help, we want to do that. I talked to Mr. Crumpler in the back about researching some, some mental health counseling and assistance, and there's plenty that the city supports, so if there's a desire, we want to help.
Next, next speaker, Mr. Brown, I think we'll, I appreciate it. Treasurer Clerk.
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Barbara Withers. Barbara Withers will be followed by Daniel Withers. Ms. Withers, thank you.
That's a very tough act to follow, but I'm Barbara Withers. I live at 820 Live Oak Plantation Road. I've lived in Tallahassee since 1954, and I've owned a home here since 1962. On January 20th, we had a very, very On January 20th, we had a very, very good meeting with three of the city engineers. They were very impressive and very thorough in explaining to us their plans so far for the sidewalks. And at that meeting, some of the opponents said, well, if you want sidewalks, why don't you move to Southwood, which I thought was kind of interesting since the sidewalks at Southwood were discussed earlier today. But I really feel that because we all pay a lot of property taxes, our homes are pretty high up on the assessment list, that we do deserve sidewalks, mainly for safety. When I go out to get my newspaper in the morning or take my garbage cans out, I almost get run over. People are speeding at 60 miles an hour down the road. And the engineers also told us that they would not only save our trees and do some meandering of the sidewalk so that it wouldn't impact the beauty of our street, but also that they would try to work in some safety, things like a small rotary, like you have in some of the country club areas in different places that would really, really help. And so, thank you for your time, and we would appreciate our sidewalks, we need them.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Next speaker?
Next is Daniel Withers, followed by Pierce Withers.
Hello, my name is Daniel Withers. I reside at 411 Live Oak. We all don't live in the same house, and actually have two properties on Live Oak Plantation Road, in addition to my other family members. I'm actually the redhead stepchild of Live Oak. I live at the end on Meridian and Live Oak.
Sir, you don't have any red hair.
Yeah, I do actually, my beard. I do have some.
It's at the top.
I'm right there on the corner. Over the last couple of years, I would say there's probably been a wreck at least not once a week or, you know, twice, three times a month. Actually, you can probably look it up, I think there is a law enforcement vehicle that rear-ended somebody right there in front of my house, which coincidentally had the quickest response time of any wrecks I've seen out there. I was kind of impressed. But right there on the corner, it is probably the most visible part where I could see, there's a bus stop across the street on Meridian, and people get off that bus stop and they walk straight down Live Oak at their own peril. It is a hazard. I've almost hit somebody on that road myself at late at night, not wearing the right, you know, reflecting gear, walking down the road. It is very hazardous. Do I like the thought of a sidewalk coming into my property and taking up that? No. You know, I'm going to be probably one of the most impacted of the neighborhood since I'm right there on the corner. It's either me or the Middlebrooks, and I know who's going to win that battle. So I'm probably going to have the sidewalk on my side of the road, and I'm for it. It is definitely a hazard. I don't understand why, at the last minute, we've been thrown into this, this meeting tonight, because I thought this was a process that was already going along. I would have dressed up nicer, but I wasn't given the notice that this was going to happen tonight, so that's why, you know, I came here at the last minute saying, what's going on? I thought this was already budgeted process, and it's already moving along. We had a great meeting with the city engineers, who told us what was going along, that they were going to keep us informed and involved, even let us have some input into design. But just to stop it at this stage of the game, before we even know what they're going to do, is really, I think, putting the cart before the horse. So I urge you to continue on, let the guys do their job, and, you know, bring us a sidewalk. And if we want to, you know, object at that point, they're going to put something that's going to tear down a bunch of trees. I'm sure you're going to have a lot of us out there hugging the trees and chaining ourselves to those live oaks, which are definitely need to be protected. They're the history of Tallahassee, and they're probably one of the most beautiful things we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pierce Withers, and then Calvin Zonker.
Mr. Mayor, Madam City Manager, distinguished commissioners, I won't take long, I just want to let you all know that I wholeheartedly support the sidewalks project. There are younger families moving into our street. One resident of our community described our neighborhood as the newlyweds and the nearly deads. There are younger families moving into our neighborhood who I believe are the face of the future of our street. They want sidewalks. I have an active lifestyle, as does everybody in my household. We'd like to have sidewalks, but actually, I'd like to talk about the people who don't have a voice at this meeting, and those are the low-income residents who live to the west of our very affluent enclave. They walk down our street all the time. I actually went out and, I didn't mean, I think he thought I was going to accost him for walking in my yard, but there's a young gentleman, I see him walking all the time, and I said, hey, can I ask you some questions? And I found out he works at Taco Bell, he lives on Meridian Road, off Meridian Road. He walks to Taco Bell every day and back. And I, you know, I said, hey, he's made a little footpath through my yard. I'm like, don't worry about that, and if you ever get in trouble out there on the street, you come and see me. I think in some ways, the working poor are just as invisible to some of the people on our street as the people picking cotton were when Live Oak Plantation was a plantation. And I'm here to speak for them, because they don't have a voice in this process, and there are not many people on my street who I think would stand up and say this. But we need sidewalks for the people who live in our, in our community, for the young families, active members of our community who would like to be able to enjoy our neighborhood. But we also need sidewalks for people who are not in our socioeconomic status who live close by. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Calvin Zonker, followed by Bovays McCadden.
Thank you, Madam Bono. I'm Calvin, I'm Calvin Zonker. I reside at 601 Live Oak Plantation Road. And we are all friends, some in favor of the sidewalks, some are not. I am not, and this is one of the reasons. If you will look at the trees there, I don't know whether you can see them on your computer, but you can see it there on the wall. These trees are living history. This is what the plantation was named for. They are, as you can see, they are hugging the road, and competent individuals will tell us, will tell us that the closer the road, the more dangerous the road has been to these trees. Presumably, we're told that it takes one inch of soil for each one inch of diameter of these trees. We're told that any kind of sidewalk that is built down and around these trees will be devastating to these. North, north of this, we will find all kinds of trees, but here, lining the road are these trees. One of the reason that this will jeopardize the trees is the procedure that the, Mr. Mendoza tells us, is that they will go along and decide which trees may be in decline. And when they find a tree in the decline, they will cut it down before they start to build a sidewalk. This is devastating to our community, and I would plead that you give some real consideration to this tree. We're also a low-capacity neighborhood. We don't have a lot of people living in our neighborhood. There are 37 houses along the south side of Live Oak Plantation Road for one and a half miles. That's one residence every 71 yards, almost every football field, okay? There are other residences in other neighborhoods that are begging for streets. I heard this morning from a friend who lives in Kinsale, which is a city street in Kalaran. In a three block, in three blocks, they have 120 houses and 40 townhouses and no sidewalks. When you compare our neighborhood with neighborhoods like this, we need to give consideration to these individuals. We thank you for your consideration, and we beg of you to think of the future of these trees and of Tallahassee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bovay McCadden, followed by Jim Beasley.
I live adjacent to Live Oak on 3111 Middlebrook Circle. I'm opposed to the sidewalks because I think money spent, 2.6 million, to put in one mile of sidewalk on Live Oak is money not equally spent in another neighborhood. From the July 2011 meeting, I mean, 2014 meeting, Live Oak was pulled out and leapfrogged over approximately 144 other projects, which were ranked higher at that time. There are people, as Cal said, all over Tallahassee begging for sidewalks, have been that way for years. I think a sidewalk on Live Oak is a luxury, not a necessity. For example, Dunn Street, where the grandmother was tased, part of that was because there was no sidewalk for her to walk on. I don't know if any grandmothers have been tased on Live Oak. The second, the second reason I'm against it is, one of the issues touted that it was good to have a sidewalk there was the safe route to school issue. Well, my child rode the school bus to Gilchrist Elementary School, so my question was to the Leon County Schools, if a sidewalk is built, will we still be provided with bus transportation? And I received this answer from Dr. Michael Moore, who's the director of the Leon County Schools Transportation. He says, I made a personal site inspection of both roads. That was in early January. That's Timberlane School Road and Live Oak Plantation Road. As previously indicated, even if sidewalks were placed in the area, it would still be unsafe for students to walk to Gilchrist Elementary School. It would take major reworking of these roads to remove the hazardous conditions. Therefore, I do not see us removing the current bus stops at the present or near future. So the city's going to pay 2.6 million for children to be able to walk to school. The county is paying to pick them up and bring them home for school, and as a citizen and as taxpayer, I'm footing part of that bill. So I'm asking you to, I appreciate you letting me speak here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Beasley is next, and then our final speaker will be Mario Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Madam City Manager, my name is Jim Beasley. My wife Martha and I live at 1147 Live Oak Plantation Road. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening. I'll be brief. My purpose is to implore that you consider taking whatever steps that might be necessary to reconsider allocating funds for the construction of sidewalks on our street. I concur with the comments the previous speakers made, the reasons for that. We just don't deserve to jump ahead of a lot of people who have greater needs in higher-density neighborhoods with small children. We have a very small child-to-adult ratio on our street. We don't want to jump ahead of them. I know it's been a hot-button item, I've been reading the zings, I've heard communications, my colleagues, it's just not right. As far as the safe route to schools issue is concerned, the only school near us is Gilchrist Elementary School, and they have a policy of asking every parent, how's your child going to get to school? And as of last May, the last time we checked, zero parents of any child at Gilchrist School says that their child is going to walk to school. And that's probably the right thing for the reasons Ms. McCadden mentioned about the unsafe route there. So those are concerns that we have, as well as the trees. I don't, I don't know that these live oaks can be preserved if we have sidewalks installed. And so, for those reasons, I would concur with the previous speakers against the sidewalk project and ask you to take whatever measure you think is necessary to reconsider that allocation of funds. Thank you.
One question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Did you, did your wife pick out your tie, or did you pick out her jacket?
Purely coincidental.
Okay.
I might ask anyone else who is on, who agrees with me to please stand and let, and let the commission...
Please.
Please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mario Gonzalez is the last speaker we have on this or any other unattended topic.
Distinguished Commissioners, good evening. My name is Mario Gonzalez, and I live at 820 Live Oak Plantation Road. And thank you for your time this evening. Basically, I am in support of the sidewalks. I feel very strongly that after our January 20th meeting that we had, we need to allow the city planners and engineers to at least propose what they have, what their design is going to look like, which really can encompass multiple options. It can encompass asphalt, it can encompass, you know, a combination of going up to a certain part, up to Middlebrooks Circle, and stopping there, and then doing some other design. So I thought they were very committed to the live oaks, they were very committed to, you know, all the trees. It's not about the trees, it's not about the historic preservation. I think we're all in complete agreement around preserving those trees, because that's really the primary reason why we moved there. That's certainly the reason why I moved there. But I know that, that we need to have at least some form of traveling between Meridian and Thomasville Road, because right now, I mean, as, just to kind of echo what Barbara indicated, it is a hazard to go, to walk any length of that road. It's 30 miles per hour, and people go twice that speed limit. So, and I encourage transparency. We had a great January 20th meeting, but there's a primary landowner that, that is part of a smaller homeowners association group that has been having side meetings and not really being transparent to the whole neighborhood. And so, you know, again, I just urge the committee to allow the city planners and engineers to put forth their design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of speakers? No further speakers. Commissioners, any comments?
Thank, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Of course, you all have a much greater history with this issue than I do. You've, you've heard the proposal, apparently you've voted for it, vote and approved a budget allocation for it, but in probably the last couple of weeks, maybe three or so, I've gotten emails, I've gotten calls. I have a couple of friends that live on Live Oak Plantation Road who have all indicated to me that they don't support this project. And, and of course, they've come tonight, and there are others that, that aren't represented here tonight that have expressed their opposition to it. And so what do we do? Do we ignore those neighbors who have come out and spoken against it here tonight, or emails that we've received in opposition to the project? When I saw the price tag, I was kind of taken aback by how much a conservative estimate of the cost of the project is going to be. And, and as I've learned more, it seems like the reasoning for the project has changed over time. It was safe routes to schools, and then it wasn't safe routes to school. And so, I guess what, what I would like to ask, and maybe the city attorney can, can direct me on how we do this, if it's the pleasure of the commission, maybe it's not, that we do reconsider this issue and, and give those individuals who've come tonight and maybe others to at least be heard. And if, if you all decide that your minds aren't changed by what you hear then, then that's okay. We move forward with the project. But I think that these individuals and others, if they choose to come, should be heard and not feel like, well, this is a fait accompli, and, you know, I'm just coming here to hear myself talk tonight. I know according to Robert's Rules of Order, in order to reconsider an issue, you have to have been on the prevailing side of the issue. I wasn't here during that time, so I would look to the attorney for his advice on how we could accomplish that, if it was the will of the commission. But certainly, it has caused a great deal of divisiveness in this neighborhood, as we've seen tonight, as we've seen in articles in the paper, zings in the paper, for whatever that's worth. And so I, I think it behooves us to hear what the other neighbors have to say and maybe reconsider this project. Yeah, I would say that there are, and not to take anything from anybody, but if there's a neighborhood where there's this kind of disagreement about a sidewalk project, I could probably name you 144 others where the, the neighborhood would welcome a sidewalk, because they are in areas where it's dangerous and hazardous every day. And so, that's, that's my simple request, is that we consider this project and at least give these individuals an opportunity to be heard and consider their input as to what they would like for their neighborhood as well. would like for their neighborhood as well.
As I indicated to Commissioner Richardson, this issue has already had considerable discussion in many meetings and at Target Issue meetings.
Can you get closer to the mic?
It was finally adopted, my recollection is, as a specific budget item, where this particular project was linked to Magnolia. And it was approved, my recollection is, by a majority unanimous vote. That being said, it's in place, and we have already spent some monies. Gabe could tell us to the extent it's other than staff time, whether we have outstanding contracts it would be obligated for. That probably has not happened to any huge extent. I think as any budget item that you adopt, if you want to stop spending any more money on that particular item, that you have the prerogative, assuming there's a willingness to revisit it, and if there's a motion to do so, there's a second, you can reconsider In the context of spending the taxpayers' dollars. We always have to be careful as to what we may already have been obligated for contractual-wise, and what we may have invested in terms of internal time and funds. So, my advice to you is that if you want to review this, to go back to this, first, you need to be aware that it was initially linked with Magnolia and approved, because both the Magnolia sidewalks and this was approved at the same time. So, I would suggest that it be inappropriate to not consider one and the other. But if you want to stop spending any more money on the sidewalks in any variety for Live Oak Plantation, that would be your prerogative, if that's the will of the Commission.
Commissioners, Ziffer.
Sure. I was on one of the four prevailing votes. As I recall, it was a 4-1 vote. I think it was Mayor Marks that voted against it, as I recall.
I think you're absolutely correct.
You know, I have great confidence that our staff will come up with a design that, first of all, saves the trees. I mean, I think the trees... Well, I know the trees are definitely worth saving. It's the character of not only that street, but it's the character of Tallahassee. When you look at that photo, that's a photo that's used quite often to help sell our city on... to people, because it is just absolutely beautiful. So, I think we all want to save the trees. But I want to certainly get to the point where we see what this thing looks like. And at that point, we can have a further conversation. But I was always of the place where this sidewalk was for more than the 30 or 40, whatever homes are that are on the road system. There's connectivity there between Meridian and Thomasville. It's important. There's an emergency room that's not that far away now. So, for me, I want to continue to move forward. I have no desire of bringing my vote back.
Commissioner Maddox.
I agree with Commissioner Ziffer. I'd like to get to the point where we see the design. This is not uncommon, that we have disagreement over sidewalks. I've seen lots and lots and lots. There were some major infrastructure program on the south side that was held up for many, many years over the lack of agreement between neighbors on who wanted a sidewalk and who didn't. It finally was bonded by this government and moved forward. So, this isn't uncommon, where part of the neighbors wanted it, part doesn't. It's the same with traffic calming. So, I'd at least like to... And of course, I want to protect the trees. And I've lived off of Meridian Road at one point or another most of my life, so I want to protect the trees. But I'd like to get us to the design concept, and then see if there's still objection. And let everybody see the design concept, because a lot of times, when we get to actual design, people... Their objections are overcome. So, I'd like to get it to there.
Other comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I understand the comments from Commissioner Maddox and Ziffer, but it's my understanding that the... That we will be presented with a contract for the design, and it's my understanding that the design contract is a half million dollars. So, do we want to spend a half million dollars to see a design that we then decide we don't want the project? I can't imagine that the taxpayers of this city would want to see us spend their money that way. And so, like I said, all I'm asking is that these citizens be given an opportunity to be heard before this project goes forward, if it's the will of the Commission, to continue with it. And I don't know... I mean, I don't know how, if during the process, they had an opportunity to raise these concerns and issues. Like I said, you all have more of a history with it than I do. But I know they've come to me now, and I couldn't just ignore their requests to be heard. And so, that's why they're here tonight, because they felt strongly enough and, you know, stayed till almost 8 o'clock at night to voice their concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I also want to thank everyone who's come and been so incredibly patient in waiting for your turn to speak here tonight. It is 8 o'clock. That's one of our longest meetings. During the time... During the past year, this was discussed extensively. Mr. Zonker, we've met you a number of times. Thank you for coming. And you've been real ardent in your position. But this is a very dangerous situation. This road is... Has, as we just heard earlier, the number of 5,000 trips a day. I didn't get that from our traffic planning staff, but I'm sure that it's increasing more and more and more and more, as people try to get down around town. Comparing it... I just... I don't know if any of you know where Kinsale is, but I actually walked on Kinsale last night. And of course, I'm thinking about sidewalks everywhere I go, and I was looking at that. Number one, there's nowhere to put a sidewalk on Kinsale, because it's very narrow. It's a very small, enclosed neighborhood. But the traffic load is not in... It is exponentially smaller than what you all face every day. We have had a discussion about this, and we have had a lot of input. And it is natural for people to be worried and concerned. But I agree with Commissioner Maddox that we should... Well, I have confidence in our staff. I've seen what they've done in other places. I've seen what they've done on Centerville Road most recently. And I... They are as committed to preserving trees in this community as anyone, and so am I. I mean, I'm going to Arbor Day to speak at 9 o'clock in the morning on Saturday morning. I've got a long history of environmental protection, actually, in this community. And I know that that is an important community value. That road is beautiful. It should be a canopied road itself. That would be a nice... I mean, it already is, and it's nice. But this road serves a lot of people who don't live on Live Oak Plantation Road. And as Mr. Withers, and I don't know if it's Reverend Withers or not, but as pointed out, there are people that are using this sidewalk to... Just to get to work. There certainly are a number of cars that are going up and down there just to get to work. And I have to... Those decisions that we made last year on the budgeting, when we decided to put this... This was up at the top of the list previously. Yes, it was. And historically, it was. The reason it fell back is... This was about 10 years ago, and the reason it fell back was because, at that time, the neighbors did not want the sidewalk. And so, it was put back way down the list. Also, we regularly change our criteria that we apply. Most recently, we have applied the criteria of whether a sidewalk will serve Star Metro's routes. We have accomplished that goal, and we're in the process of reprioritizing. So, there is really no specific number that you can say that it jumped up over all these others to get its place where it is. It is a collector. One of my... I feel that the most dangerous situations right now that we have in the city are people walking on collector roads. We've covered the arterials pretty well, but collectors... And a lot of people aren't going to be walking down arterials. But collectors are where people are walking in the streets and all over town. And as we've been... And that's the case that I've been making at my Target Issue Committee, as far as having that as a criteria. So, that said, and given the fact that we had a great deal of discussion about this at our budget hearings, of which there were two last fall, I feel that... And believe me, we have gotten a lot of emails. We've gotten a lot of emails for the sidewalk also. So, as far as... I don't know if Commissioner... All this was, you know, prior to Commissioner Richardson's. I appreciate his responsiveness. But we have a new Commissioner now. When a new Commissioner comes in, you know, everybody comes in to say hello. And so, I'm going to have to stick by my position from originally from last year.
Any other comments on this item?
Commissioner, I participate in what ended up being the compromise agreement by adding Magnolia in here. I did have some of the same concerns you had in opposing Live Oak. But where we ended was a 4-1 vote in support of moving those two projects forward, and I don't see a majority at this time to change that position. But I do think that when the design comes back, a number of the concerns that were raised tonight, and yes, that will be a half a million dollars later, would still be apropos for taken into consideration. We're growing community and growing city, and we're trying to retrofit the whole place, frankly, to more urbanized standards, and sidewalks are a part of that. So, I think we'll... We will get another... You will certainly get another shot at this conversation at that time, along with the rest of the Commission. Commissioners, we're now on... And obviously, thanks to those of you who waited so patiently and expressed your thoughts this evening, and the color coordination. I really want that tie, and we'll have to work that out. Commissioners, we're now on to a sharing of ideas, and I actually want to go real quickly first, which is to say, oh, my colleague, Commissioner Maddox, an apology. And I'll wait for the chatter to clear. But during the... Then the heat and passion of the discussion that we had on Drop the Box, he pointed out my comment around stating that any argument and derision of my opinion was illegitimate, and that was completely wrong. I am out of line to suggest that any of my colleagues' comments are illegitimate, simply because we disagree. And certainly, to someone who I respect as a political mentor and otherwise, I want to offer you, my sister, apology on that.
Vice versa.
Appreciate it. And I think we're now on to other sharing of ideas, and Commissioner Maddox, you're first.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very much for that. And I wanted to thank Mr. Landry with NAACP, and also the pastor, who I've agreed to go on his radio show to talk about it, for speaking with me afterwards. And the main portion of what I was concerned with was the four-prong test from the federal government that would allow applicants to know of that, and it was unclear to them. So, I'm glad I had that conversation. I wanted to reiterate it. I've got one kind of not serious thing, and then one serious one. The first is usually, Commissioner Richardson, during this portion of the meeting, I bring forward a dog from the animal shelter to be adopted. And we have been successful in getting commissioners to adopt dogs, and you're next in line, sir.
I have one in my house that I don't want.
Recently adopted one.
My kids want him.
So, there's a reason why we don't have a dog tonight. There are currently no dogs to adopt that are suitable right now. This is the emptiest they've ever been, because Saturday, the Animal Service Center held its first-ever fur rosen event, where over 40 animals were adopted out to forever homes plus one bunny rabbit. And the animal shelter is now hosting monthly microchip rabies clinics at the shelter. They'll be on the first Tuesday of every month from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and all dogs, cats, and ferrets are welcome to attend. The clinic is free to the public, and a suggested donation of $5 for rabies vaccine and $10 for microchips. So, if you're interested in either one of those, please visit our shelter. And then finally, I had a budget question. I hate to do that to you all late in the meeting, but is somebody from Budget here? Raul, can you come forward?
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Levin? I hate to give a numbers question, it's late.
He's moving very slow.
He is.
What is the problem? Could you brush it up a little bit?
Yeah, he's getting old.
For the public, Mr. Levin is...
His age, that's what's keeping him so slow.
Is in charge of all things budget. I had a numbers question, sir. Today, as of today, how old are you?
It's a secret.
Is this like the rest of our budget process?
I'm almost the same age as you are.
Ladies and gentlemen... Ladies and gentlemen, could you join me?
Happy birthday, man.
Saying happy birthday to Mr. Raul.
Happy birthday, Raul.
And Commissioner Maddox, I appreciate you doing that, because we forgot to acknowledge last week, our last meeting, Cynthia Barber's birthday was that day, and totally forgot to acknowledge that. So, happy birthday.
She looks a lot younger than Raul.
For sure. That's for sure. You know that spray in his hair, right?
That's it.
Commissioner Ziffer.
I'm just going to make an assumption, since I was on the losing end of a 3-2 vote, too, that I was part of that, could have opposing views, and it was still located...
I'm so sorry. He called it out, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure, you know...
Well, he called you Commissioner Maddox earlier, so it kind of covered it.
It applies to the twins. And not my twins. Other sharing of idea comments?
Commissioner Miller.
Three things. Well, the first thing is that, as I mentioned earlier, Arbor Day is this week. It's on Saturday. It starts at 9 o'clock, and it's located at the 20... The address, actually, is 2500 Pedrick Road. That's located on the Lafayette Heritage Trail at the Offered Arm Greenway. So, if anybody comes out, it's a fun event. It makes you feel really good about the way you spend your morning, and there's hardly any work. I mean, they pre-dig the holes. Basically, y'all have to just be out there and put the tree in the hole, and put some dirt around it, and stomp down, and then come back for the rest of your life every year and see how your tree's doing. At that time, we'll also be awarding the winners to the Tree Challenge that was started by Tabitha Frazier with the... I guess with the Canopied Roads Citizens Committee. So, those awards will be given too. So, I want to announce that. The second thing is that we, in the office, had a wonderful idea to make our... To encourage our folks to walk, everyone in the building, and also to make it a much more fun experience. And since murals are becoming so popular all over town, maybe we can get Coca involved in helping us to connect with some artists who can put some murals in our stairways. It would be much more fun to walk up and down if you had a real pleasant mural to enjoy while you went. Finally, and this is a little bit more serious, I have been in discussions with folks about Uber. Uber is a... It's a transportation service. And the reason that I'm bringing it up here, Commissioners, is basically that I've asked... We discussed this at Target Issue. There is no dearth of, if you want to Google situations, where Uber is involved in cities with city councils and commissions and counties all over the country. Because of the fact that normal taxi cab operations are regulated, we have excellent regulations here that guarantee that people get into a clean, safe ride at our airports or any of our restaurants in the evening when they need to go home, and arrive safely at their location, because the drivers are vetted, they have commercial insurance, and a number of other things that aren't applied to Uber drivers. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'd asked that that be considered at Target Issue, and invite you to look up some of this for yourself.
Commissioner Miller, just on that point, completely agree with you on bringing that item back. There are a lot of communities that are wrestling with what to do there. But in the meantime, I would hope that the laws that are on the books are being enforced that exist here in that, you know, pretty quick, fast, and in a hurry. And I know that the city attorney and I also met with some folks from Uber who came to town. And I know that they're working through this, but meanwhile, every day, that the law, in many cases, is being ignored as it currently exists, and so, we've got to address that.
And if you allow me to take just two minutes on this, it was an intent to bring an amended ordinance back on the 14th, or the 11th. And I intend or plan to bring back an amended ordinance on the 28th. We've met... I personally have met with the taxi cab folks. I met with the Uber folks. I have another meeting set up next week with the Uber folks that are flying in. I have another meeting set up next week with the Uber folks that are flying in. The principles that I am operating under, and I'll be glad to send each of you a memo outlining detail of what they are, is number one, we're not going to give any special treatment to Uber. We're going to treat them consistent with their new technology, but not give them any advantage over the taxi cabs or the transportation for hires that we also regulate. Number two, we're going to make sure that our passengers, whether they're in Uber or taxis, are protected in terms of criminal history background checks, review of drivers. Number two, that the insurance is appropriate and no less than what we're currently doing for vehicles for hire, that in terms of rate, that no one is able to undercut the rates of another entity that we're regulating. And what that would mean is basically that Uber would not be able to charge less than what taxis are charging, just like transportation, flat rate transportation companies now can't do that. And as part of that fee issue on the other end is that we set some ceiling because we know, and Uber reps have admitted to us, they have surge policy where the rates could, depending on the demand, go up two or three or four times. And we know we don't want to allow that situation. While we may be somewhat willing to consider flexible rates depending on the demand, we certainly don't want that to be totally out of line with everything else. And we want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where, as a provider of services, that it is easy intentionally or not to discriminate against certain areas of town or certain classifications of passengers. We've received a number of concerns from folks that rely upon taxis for doctor's appointments, for trips to the grocery store. So we're sensitive to the niches that the taxi services in this town have provided over the years and have been good citizens. And we want to make sure that we're able to have a complaint system with Uber and anybody we're regulating that will allow us, if there is a complaint, that the, from a passenger, that we can get that heard, investigated, and adjusted. So those are the basic principles. Before the end of the day Friday, I'll be glad to send you a summary of the changes that, and the principles that I've been operated under. Certainly, if it's your desire to bring it back to a target issue, I'm happy to do that. Once I outline those points, you may not think that is necessary. If you do, that's fine. That may in fact slow us up until March to get something. We've also indicated to all our police officers that, from the city's perspective, Uber cars are subject to the same regulations as transportation for hire that are charged in flat rates. The means in which they're arriving, that may be a digital format, but it's still the same principle. And so we're accepting, and the police department, and our police vehicle for hire administrator, any complaints about that, and we, you know, would welcome those and try to adjust those. What we've also told both the taxi folks and the Uber folks and the transportation vehicles is that, once we amend our ordinance, then there's always going to be, we'll try our best to enforce it. But the reality is that Chief DeLeo, the enforcement mechanism for this, as well as for records and all, is in the police department. Right now, he has a lieutenant, part-time assigned, to trying to deal with these regulations. I can tell you that the chief is not excited, and I have certainly told the taxi folks that, hey, we can make all these changes, but aside from passenger safety, the enforcement here, it may not be the top priority in the police department right now, that we've got plenty of other issues that, not to say we're going to ignore the regulations, but there's always a limitation. And typically, the time that the vehicles for hire are most active is the time we've got other calls for services. So that's going to be an issue, too, that you will need to look at and address when we revise this, is how we administer this and the costs associated therewith.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, enforcement will, first of all, I agree that enforcement, we should enforce ordinances that we have on the books. And enforcement will not be practical because of the lag of time before something is reported till someone can check it. The violation moves and is on four wheels. So the only way to have valid enforcement is to proactively go out there and check it yourselves. And if you read in today's Palm Beach Post, you can see where Palm Beach County has done that successfully. And Madam Manager, perhaps you could get with the chief and
I will.
Talk about that.
And the only other thing, Commissioner Miller, if it is agreeable to you, it sounds like they're closer to something proposed. My suggestion would be we go ahead and bring that back then to the full commission.
I think that would be a delightful idea. We have more than
I know you wanted another thing to do.
We have plenty to do at long-range planning.
Right, right. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a follow-up to the sidewalk issue, I'd be interested, Mr. Mayor, in knowing when we can get the priority list of sidewalks and what the current criteria are
Right.
At this point, that we're making that decision.
The committee does have that. Commissioner Miller, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I do. We determined last year that there, well, a number of things happened. First of all, there were sidewalk lists all around, and they were consolidated by our staff into one list. Also, several years ago, two or three years ago, I guess, we had set priorities A, B, and C, but the strongest was that we wanted the sidewalk system that supported Star Metro to be finished. They are well beyond 95% coverage, and now only the most, you know, impossible places don't have the coverage that they need. We determined that it was time to come up, to reprise ourselves of our priorities, and we've been working pretty hard, I mean, to the point where I've been having, for some period of time at the earlier part of the year, weekly meetings with staff. They're very close. They're trying to figure out what they're doing right this minute from our last meeting was to determine, they've come up with a new criteria called attractors. What is attracting a person to, and where they're trying to go with this is how does one get from place to place to place, and who is trying to get where? And so how do we facilitate that? Another one, as I mentioned, that I feel strongly about is that we look at our collector sidewalks, collector roads, and make sure that we don't have people out there walking on those. But I want to say exactly when this is going to come before you. I think it's going to come to target issue in February. We've worked through all of those criteria that we've, you know, the opportunities, and trying to get a really good list that will address the greatest need, not just who doesn't have a sidewalk, but, and not just who wants a sidewalk, but where are people in danger, essentially? Safe routes to schools is part of it. That's part of our criteria, and I want to add something about that in a minute. But the staff has, then they added this, we're talking about existing and latent demand. Those are two priorities. And how do you assess that? And that's where we are, and that's how they came up with the attractant concept, and we're perfecting that piece of it. The rest of it is pretty much settled. What I would suggest is that you ask public works staff to come in and planning, actually, the person that you want to talk to is, and I hate to, my suggestion would be Megan Doherty from the planning department, because she is really on top of this topic.
Okay.
And I wanted to say something about the safe routes to schools. And I believe, my understanding, and I checked on this, is that nobody within two miles of a school has a bus service. I mean, they just don't
It's unsafe.
Well, you should know. You're the
If it's an unsafe walking condition, they can be transported within
But that is, you know, so that's where the people would come from to walk on a sidewalk. And that's why it's on a list.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other items for sharing of ideas this evening? Y'all were diligent this evening. Lot to take up. We will not have another regular meeting until the end of the month?
The 25th of February.
The 25th of February. We do have our commission retreat next week. And other than that, we're adj-
Could I ask something? Could you, I would like some beans, something. I'm glad we had baked beans tonight, but I'd like some healthy food, considering that people, not everybody eats barbecue and meat and, you know, that kind of thing.
Are we really talking about beans?
Disagree.
I want some good food.
I'll buy the beans.
I want some good food, and I want some good vegetarian food, so find a place, please.
Very interesting that you should say that.
And I'll take some fried chicken. Thank you.
And that's, actually, the menu is both.
Thank you.
We know this group. We know this group.
And the fried chicken. We stand adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.
And they didn't ask us. They didn't ask.